All right, let me know if you hear Nicole. I have a lot of stuff. What I do is...
Yeah, I know, but it's like usually here when I feel...
I'm on the FBI.
The side that we get...
Sure, my name is...
Well, I signed it.
No, after.
All right, everyone. We're going to begin. First, I just want to thank everyone for coming this evening. This is your meeting. So, we will begin.
Just to explain this kind of being in transit, the Blue Park River Bridge is stuck in the open position. It's trapped in traffic. So, we're not sure once we'll be able to arrive. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Would you give us the city updates?
Yes, we had a Women Entrepreneurs Networking Event on Sunday. The City Home Chamber of Commerce joined to host a Women Entrepreneurs Work Networking Event. Attendees had the opportunity to network with local entrepreneurs and the infamous panel of amazing women. The event was part of an ongoing effort to encourage an environment which women-owned businesses can grow and thrive. Palace included City Council Vice President Louie Dines, Director of Econ and Development and Planning Patty Moore, Director of the Long Island Small Business Development Center Erica Chase Gregory, Owner of Eagles and Bogers and a board member of the Long Beach Chamber of Commerce Lee Zetawa and Tozer and Paul Vermin, who weekly wants their own lifestyle blog between the boards and the bank. This Friday night will be tween night out from 5:00 to 8:30 for middle school students. It will be held at the Long Beach Ice Arena. The event includes free ice skating, a snack bar meal, and more. The Kenny Pudens Farmers Market is turned to the season starting this Saturday, May 5th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The market will be open on Wednesdays through November 10th. For additional information, visit li greenmarket.org. First Friday plus, this Sunday, May 6th, the Long Beach Arts Campus, property of the Long Beach Public Library, will host the Metropolitan Lesmur Quintet and a concert at the library. The program starts at 2:00. This first Friday, the event is free for all, and the mall are open. Looking ahead to the summer, the City of Long Beach Union Family Service Day Trippers Summer Camp runs for eight weeks from June 25th through 17th, all day from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's geared for children ages 5 to 12, and groups trip to amazing places like Six Flags, Squid Flash, and maybe will find along great activities such as swimming sports, arts and crafts, games, and more. For details, visit the city's website or call 431-3510. And finally, beach passes go on sale Monday, May 7th at the Recreation Center Gazebo. For more information, you can call 431-1021. It will be open only weekdays from now till Memorial Day weekend. Weekdays, 9:00 to 6:00, weekends, 9:00 to 4:00. And then there'll be much more availability. The last thing I have is, I kind of consider this unfinished business. The $2.1 million bond that was defeated for separation pays. We've been able to find 550,000 in old bonds that were paid for separation pays that hadn't gone to their maximum. So, we have 550 towards that. I have what a nonessential overtime free cut and just gave $200,000 savings. All spending has been curtailed except for emergencies, which I anticipate saving another $200,000. My replacement of the city manager has no cost to the city, plus not replacing his secretary, the controller, deputy controller. Will have saved toward the end of June to win $65,000, which brings us to 1.215. So, we're still about $800,000, $900,000 shy. We have had meetings with the unions to see back any concessions, and that's an ongoing process.
Oh, and the only temporary employees met and have made an offer to the city. That was just me right before the speed. I haven't had the chance to calculate the savings.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. All right, Nicole, first hearing.
First item of the season is public hearing for the purpose of giving citizens and having good opportunities to publicly present their views on the general summary of the proposed budget for the year July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019.
This is exactly what the resolution says, an opportunity for the public to let their thoughts be known. The budget was delivered to the council on April 10th and released to the general public on April 20th. We created a sheet at the back of the room, which gives you a breakdown of what we have packed our goals. We also have pretty much itemized all departments, and it does come with a proposed $12.363 tax increase. Okay, the budget opens up with an address from me, which I'd like to read at this time for anyone that hasn't seen it, to give you a little insight into how I arrived at the budget and mine to that ministry. Dear fellow residents, this year, the proposed budget was formulated with fresh perspective. As a 40-year senior employee and lifelong resident, I fully recognize the complex financial issues and unique challenges we face to provide a quality of life our community deserves. As I can say to the manager, I work diligently with my department, taking great care of the permanent staff. Providing the services our residents have come to expect comes with a cost, and this year's budget reflects that reality. Rising fixed costs, we acknowledge that those financial hurdles the city has faced since the inherited fiscal crisis in 2012 have not run away. Rising healthcare and pension funding, contractually obligated salary increases, and legal judgments remain major challenges while looking to maintain and improve infrastructure control. Public safety and employee benefits represent more than 45% of the city's annual budget. With that in mind, we have worked with our union partners to find new spaces to eat the burger on local taxpayers. As it currently stands, only our nine new management employees, less than 1% of the city's workforce, and now recent new C A hires are the only ones who pay a portion of the healthcare. This is simply unsustainable. We need all of our unions to continue to follow man's sleeve. If there is not substantial contribution from employees toward their healthcare costs, personal reductions in service costs will eventually become necessary. Post-safety repairs, in the five years since standing, the city has undertaken hundreds of public works projects, totaling hundreds of millions of dollars. While the repairs and improvements have helped revive our city, these long-term investments are not free. Though this development, the city has worked extremely hard to ensure that reimbursement funding from FEMA and New York State, which is sister and co-entire of rebuilding, we are still responsible for letting out the initial funds prior to reimbursement. Additionally, the city has had to pay for a significant portion of its infrastructure enhancement not directly related to sanding. Every year, residents are committed to add more roads to be resurfaced, and as such, the city has made this a top priority. Since 2012, the city has nearly tripled road repairing and reconstruction projects in 36 total, six per year. In the last six years, compared to 22, 2.2 per year from 2002 to 2011. Also, when the decision is made to reconstruct the street, the improvements are not simply superficial. Along the Old Lay, the city also rebuilt the sewers and drainage with resiliency. We also coordinated with P S E I P and National Grid to ensure a smart installation of utilities. We are extremely fortunate that our city includes a number of services and departments municipalities do not have. For instance, many neighboring communities do not have their own dedicated police, paid by recreation events, transportation, and planning supplies. We are also responsible for maintaining our 2.2-mile boardwalk. In addition, preservation of the characteristics of our ocean beach park is critical, not only to the natural environment, but to the very essence of what makes Long Beach extraordinary. I am proud of our shining city by the sea and the tremendous accolades we receive through the media, including USA Today, who placed Long Beach one of the top 10 beaches in the country, Newsweek brought us to have a famous beach in the region, New York Times spotlighted our real estate market, Newsday named our boardwalk the number-one summer destination, Safewise named us one of the top 10 safest cities in New York State. Though these accolades require a great deal of city resources and resources, they help set us apart. Long Beach residents can be truly proud of their city and its many recent successes. Intelligent spending budget, planning for the coming year, we have devised a realistic budget that represents our actual costs. Looking to the future, this administration must remain limited to slazier overtime and discretionary spending across the board. Using our performance management metric, we can no longer rely on departments who arbitrarily control their budgets. We have to treat our city more like a business. Management is needed now more than ever to ensure town buildings and make the hard choices for the budget that is responsible, defendable, sustainable, very truly yours.
Thank you for reading that. Okay, so we're going to open this up to the floor to hear your thoughts on how we proceed forward. We're here to listen and take notes. You will get three minutes of time. So, you want to start? Anyone who's ready to come up? Right here, ma'am, right in front. Go touch.
You said you meant the unions by now have made concessions. I don't know if that's... The F A A made concessions, and they all tried to work with the city. With that being said, why are we giving raises when all these people...
Loud America!
Why are we giving raises to, um, not here? Corporation Council, um... You know what you got in here. Corporation Council is $25,000. You just got to pay out, and meanwhile, these people live paycheck to paycheck, and you're giving raises out. I don't see where you're making concessions is... This is not a decision coming from the working people. And I don't understand why. Why? And my other question is, and I'll address it to you, Mr. President.
Please.
Okay. I'm sorry to, you know, annoy you, but I have a right to care. I take my time.
I can't read your question.
Okay, my question is, when you move somebody from an exempt position to a position within the C S E A, don't you have to send that up to the state making a new position?
No.
You don't have to do that?
No.
You're sure?
Oh, yes.
All right. I got it from the party that I used to work with. Okay? And you cannot just make up positions. Okay? And it has to be approved.
Positioning is essential already, because you know many...
We have, we have...
Positioning is essential already, because you know many have sent anything up whose head. It's already permissible permission.
No. So, wait, what you got, yeah, yeah, now?
I have no idea. So, Ms. Holdson, is that you have a question? So, these raises that we talked about, let's just say it's 1% of the budget, so I can say these...
Should be no raise?
Okay, so, let's think we have...
You don't check this in or out. You don't write a check out.
I did not. I have a question. I have a question. So, if we did, if we were to not give those raises, if those raises were not given out, let's say we get down to the 11%, is there something in this budget that you would like to see cut? Is there a service or something that you would like to see cut? This is a budget hearing, so I do want to hear what you have to say about the budget.
I don't think our services day-to-day need to be cut by your people that have rated years to become full-time employees. I don't think it's fair to constantly take from that group. I don't think it's right...
The C S E A gave 0% raise, they gave back a lot.
Yes, they did, yeah.
I'm totally agreeing with you.
I mean, I gave my all, but I have a whole sheen of my head. But I don't see where he feels you have the right to give out anything at this time, any rate. I wouldn't care who it is for. I don't think you have a right to do that. I don't care if it's 1%. I don't care if it's a fraction of 1%. You're in a hole. You gotta dig yourself out.
And that's why I'm asking if you have any recommendations based on the budget that you would like to...
No raise! No raise! No raise! No raise! No raise! No raise!
I call this number right here, and then you can tell, sure. Please state your name at this.
Speak into the mic.
Okay, let's try that again. Can you hear me now?
Yeah!
Fantastic! All right, so...
Can you hear me now?
Sure. You're asking, and you're close. I would have thought you could have heard me. My name is Alex Vogel. Got a couple things. One suggestion, I know I shared with all of you the concept of creating an external advisory panel, which I think would be quite helpful. Second piece, I think if you want to make trade-off decisions, what you need to see is data on the impact of trade-offs. The budget document doesn't really show anything in terms of service metrics or service levels. They very well be somewhere, but it's not, at least apparently to me. The third piece I want to discuss hinges, or suggestion, hinges a little bit on this concept of vacation time. Now, my background is in private industry. And a long time ago, to take this concept of sick, to address the concept of sick leaves, to address the concept of vacation time, people instituted caps in private industry. So, if you've got two weeks, you've got two weeks, use it or lose it. And the exception, the exception... I want a moment to applause, guys. I don't know that this is the right thing, but it strikes me that you're creating something that goes well beyond vacation. You're creating an ongoing financial liability, which you can neither predict nor can you manage. And the way to have the images is through a set of exception process controls, which I think if I reconstituted discussion on this issue, didn't work particularly well. So, my thinking is, why can't you simplify? If the purpose of vacation time is to take vacation, and the purpose of sick time is to compensate during your ill, that shouldn't be an accruing revenue stream that quite frankly may very well present as a risk to the city, but in point of fact becomes a long-term compensation tool for an individual. Now, I have no wish to take that on compensation. I think that's a good thing, to the extent that positions are underpaid or under-valued. I think we should address it that way. I don't, I think what's happened is the fact that practice here has created a liability that is neither predictable nor adequately managed. I think you can simplify that. There may be contractual ramifications. I don't, I don't know the majority of your labor force is under contract, but at the very least, is, to my lay of the finger, is pretty simple way to eliminate that practice for any exempt employee.
So, I could speak to that a little bit, just in terms of, I think, 99% of our workforce is under contract. The exempt employee staff right now, I think, is 14... 14 exempt staff.
Yeah, the reason I suggest an exempt is, it's much easier to work out a transition point with 14 people than with several thousand.
No, and I think the whole council has spoken that that's something we do want to do and look at, but unfortunately, you know, it is 14 employees.
I understand.
Whereas something may seem, you know, we don't like the practice of being...
It's okay. My job here wasn't to get you to answer now, it was to try and share some information with you. Because I think you still got several weeks before we have to be locked down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pretty neat, Roy, that's 72 Boyd Street. I know Manville Salvage wrote up the contractual increases. I don't quite understand how last year you had, what was it, 227,000 worth of increases, contractual increases, and this year it's 830,000.
Our brothers and sisters of the C S E A took a zero increase last year, and which is reflected in the middle school tax increase last year.
Zero was not 227,000. What is this now?
Mr. Wilson, I'm sure you're very thrilled in school for that there is step increases. I think that was the suggestion.
It was step increases. So, they, last year, they had the step increases, it wasn't zero.
It was an associative increases, contractual increases.
So, last year, there wasn't an increase, but it was step increase, not the actual wages. I mean, they took home more money, but they didn't take home more on those contractual wages, is what you're saying. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, when I look at some of the increases, you have like 19% for some people. Is that, are those individuals, I mean, or are you actually increasing the number of people? Let's say here, you have the Principal of Camden Club went from 87,000 to 133,000, 19% increase. Is that...
Oh, what a crazy!
Yes, and that person is affiliated for the, for Sherri James, and factored in that increase into that $65,000 payment. So, we took that increase off of what we see, so we give you a true number of all the payments.
So, the Payoff Supervisor went from 64,000 to 1,026% increase?
Who is that, say that again? What was the title?
Payoff Supervisor.
Cashier.
So, the way the C S E A salaries payroll, where there's a pay and pay... For the first 10 years of your employment, you're on a lower salary payroll. If you're 10, you jump into the higher salary.
No, it wasn't that! Here, you will let people every year that jump from that one salary table to another level. See, all the larger, it's the latter.
Always doing like that. The situation right now, we have to give a 26% increase.
It's contractual obligation.
On commission of buildings and property, 17.6% increase? Same thing?
No, this was explained a couple of weeks ago. The Commissioner of Buildings is also taking on the O E M, Director of the O E M, and that's the sites of the board handling that. We were going to allocate 150,000, but because of our running, and then that would be ready fund for one year, and then we would have to draw it. So, now, by doing it this way, 70,000, then 70,000 for Stephanie. So, we will have that grant fund this year, and next year, we have to allocate to a 34% of our 100,000.
Isn't that only put on another line? Yeah? That would be accounting issue. Another question, last year, we had a $9,434,000 fund balance. We moved up, I think, about 300,000 of that. Do we still have these $1,000 as fund balance?
Yeah, we have about 6.5.
So, you have 6.5 as a fund balance, unallocated fund balance. Yet we're looking to bond, and the bonding costs us money. And the bonding has gone up again this year. I mean, I guess our business continues to fund. It's not like we're getting rid of the debt. We're getting more and more debt over here. How are we going to stop that?
Are there any cuts you propose, sir?
No, I'm cutting. Your job!
So, we, you talked about 20,000 here and 20,000 there, that's great.
No, no, debt service is 13 million. 13 million.
Okay.
Debt service. 4 million of that is our interest. Stop bonding.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, where it is.
We're still looking at a 12% tax increase.
Not with 4 million dollars, perhaps, but if you stop bonding, 4 million dollars is just the interest. That's 10% of what you're going to collect from the taxpayers. Everybody, without that, you would be 10% less. You know that. I mean, you have to understand, when you say 12% increase, you're not talking about the departmental charges on top of that, are you? That's a different increase.
I don't, I don't know. You answer my question?
Do you guys know anything? You gotta go to Atlantic City!
12.67% increase. That does not include the departmental increase, does it?
Yeah, of course.
You know? Okay, so, where's the place to go? Say...
I have a question. I found the budget difficult to read because there are very few specifics on it. I wasn't sure if somebody was being paid on many different lines. It is difficult. I'm just going to give you some of my thoughts and suggestions based on what I saw. We're looking at a big tax increase. Debt service plus another four million, fees on water and sewer, unpaid beach bathrooms, and as Ms. Diamond said at the last meeting, we can borrow. Not anymore. We need an independent forensic audit on the city finances. If you have to borrow to make it to the end of the year, you have to stop spending. This is month five without a full-time city manager and a comptroller. Why isn't the council working harder on this? How many interviews have you actually held? One of my ideas is to change the city charter. The city manager still holds the same power as the mayor. This has to be changed. The city council is voted in, and they should tell the city manager what to do, not the other way around. And I brought this up before, a citizen review committee should be instituted immediately, and its members should not be political cronies. They should look at each budget carry item before it is spent. For example, a simple, small one, if this committee could have looked at the thirty-five-thousand dollars proposed for those planters, they might have asked, where will we get the money for the flowers? And then we probably wouldn't have bought the planters, and we would have saved thirty-five-thousand. And my next suggestion is to get back the money from the separation payouts, especially from those who have not separated. Especially, especially from those who are overpaid. This money, I believe, was paid out illegally because it was used, uh, paid out before it was bonded for. It seems the city council was trying to hide these payouts until Mr. Bender called them on it. All discretionary raises should be canceled going back to January twenty-eighteen. If the city council knew of our financial problems, they should have not been aware of awarding raises. Save for new titles and status. Moving exempt to union used to need a test and time, I believe thirty days. So I think that was illegal. If our city council members did not know about our financial problems, then they should all resign, and I think that's a good idea. And Jack came on board. He said we were in debt for five million dollars due to the last group who sat up here. Less than a year ago, Jack said that he had brought Long Beach to solvency, and that we had nine million dollars sitting in a rainy day fund. Where did that money go? We are down almost on estimated about one-hundred-and-fifteen million in debt. Poor management, people not showing up for meetings, bad lawsuits, all of it shows no one's paying attention. Who is really running our city? No one's held accountable. City council rarely answers questions. We need an independent forensic audit, audit on the city finances, and just because it's legal doesn't mean it's right.
I just want to speak to the audience in the House Comptroller Office isn't here. Um, they're here every year since we, uh, since twenty-eleven. Um, and I did request a meeting that the council gets to actually meet the folks that are in here from the comptroller's office, which will happen shortly. So they are doing the audit, and they have done the audit since deficit financing began.
But they missed it. They missed it, so maybe we need someone else.
On a real audit, she said.
The O.C. Comptroller. Sir? State your name and address for record.
Bill Schles, Three-Sixty-Five, T. Street, Long Street. Each department head creates their budget for their department. What I would like to see, I've seen it there in other municipalities, is that after the budgets are figured out, that each department head deducts five percent. At that point, you're asking which way to save money? That's one way. There are many others you could hear. But, uh, these people in faculty should be more courteous and, and work with everybody in front of us, okay? It's a, it's a board that has, uh, discussions, but yet is controlled by the Democrats, and this is a political issue, and, and, uh, it seems like the one Republican or non-Republican person is trying to twist everything. And, and I'm against that. Also, I'm saying twenty-five percent, uh, five percent deduction in department heads' budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schles.
During the budget process, I, the first thing I did was when I came in in January, that we were all called in to find out where the current budget was at, so I'd know that we were here, we'll make a move to the end of the year. There was, uh, a number of departments that were more than fifty percent of their own time, which was a concern because we have it through the year. We do have to factor in that the first half year is more expensive than the second half because it includes July and August, which are very expensive months for us, we're operating in East Park and all the summer activities. But we then got those budgets aligned, uh, we defined them safely, and ensured that they stay on target for this coming year. Then we went forward, and every budget was scrutinized. Uh, we did look at trends, which was very important to see, to see what we were spending for the last couple of years, and what we could reasonably cut. Um, as far as the budget can come across the board, we probably realize, um, a significant cut, but not, not an actual number, because there are some departments that really only have labor as their expense, and labor is, is governed by contracts. So you couldn't just do a unified five percent pin cut, because that would have to negotiate with the unions. So discretionary spending is, is about five percent, four percent. So we've... Four million. So that, that, if you cut all of that, you'd still be looking at a tax increase. And that would be no gasoline, no paper, no nothing.
Hi.
Hi. State your name and address.
I'm short with time to see the mom and women that beside me, Westport, Long Beach. I've sat in your chairs, and I've spent my time out here. And, you know, Long Beach, it's always been a struggle, but it is unconscionable to saddle the residents with a more than twelve percent increase. And you've been... You've been artificially making it a no-tax increase budget for how many years now? And when we were, we were discussing the bonds in our last meeting, all I saw was this body kind of perplexed and couldn't answer questions because, well, Jack knew. What happened to the nine-million-dollar, eight-million-dollar, seven-million-dollar, whatever it is surplus that Jack Shearman was throwing about? And if you don't know, if you don't know, you don't belong sitting up there. I don't agree with the last speaker, the one who immediately preceded me, but every other speaker before, I agree with. And it's all about cutting the waste. You know, you have to have the, you have to have the desire to do it. Okay? So cut the waste and stop moving people around and creating these very high-paying jobs for friends and family, and get the need, and get the need of running the city.
Right.
So when I sat on the council, and we were fiscally stressed, the council members took a cut in their pay.
So...
And maybe you want to speak to the exents and say to them, you know, times are really tough, and we are taxing people out of their homes. Would you consider taking a pay cut? At least you'll be able to keep your job. You know, that's how it is in the real world. If you don't know, you're not there. Okay?
This would be...
Yes, sir?
The only group of folks that have come to us with actual cut in pay has been the exents. They offered us five days of no pay. It's a pretty big savings, so the committee was no pay. It says starting, starting with negotiation.
Nice gesture, but it falls really short.
But there's fourteen of them, so there's fourteen, so even if we eliminate every single one of them, you're looking at a ten percent tax increase.
You know what?
So where, where would you like, where, where is the way that you see?
I want you to do your job and cut the waste.
Okay.
And believe me, there's a lot of it, I know.
I don't believe there is. I think we're running pretty near.
I've been in that chair.
We're running pretty near.
I don't think you're running pretty near at all.
Have you talked to any of the superintendents of any of the departments?
I'll, I'll tell you where I think you should cut something. Stop using the swift emergency telephone notification program for nonsensical communications. Jack was restored, so maybe that'll just go away by attrition.
I don't think we've used it once this year, but I think we have unlimited trouble with it, right? Yes. We don't use it anymore.
Uh, thank you. I stand corrected. Please, uh, yes, thank you very much, David. My time is up. I ask that you please...
Cut the waste.
Very seriously consider what is going on in the neighborhood of Long Beach, because it's not pretty.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Aggittas. I'm on one-oh-two Pennsylvania Avenue. I have two separate questions. First, a question to assure that my elected city council members are getting all the information they need to make a sound opinion on this budget. I would like to know if this, that all city council members have been given a copy of the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, audit and financials. Mr. Taggins?
And I will.
Yes, they are, considering it's on the budget without it. Why are they not available? They're supposed to be available three months after the end of the fiscal year. So the Comptroller notes that we're not on one of the budget answers for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
In order to vote on a budget for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, it's really helpful to have your audit and financial for fiscal year ending two thousand seventeen.
We're, we're supposed to get the comptroller's report next week, is that right? By Friday, from the comptroller.
The current, uh, proposed budget is misleading and disingenuous. One can argue that using funds for financing and the fund balance each year is not a balanced operating budget. The two thousand nineteen budget calls for one-point-five-million in borrowing for more termination salaries, totally one-point-four-million. Do the city council members have a list of the recipients? What measures have been put in place since the last city council meeting to ensure that all city council members are able to approve the payout for the two thousand nineteen budget? The city charter says that city council members are supposed to receive a personnel roster for each budget. Have they received this information from the two thousand nineteen budget? Mr. Taggins? So that means every city council member knows the increases exempt and not exempt?
Yes.
There are two-point-two-nine-five-million in termination salaries ending fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, and one-point-eight-two-six-million in fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Right now, the year-to-date, uh, March thirtieth, year-to-date termination salaries for fiscal year ending June eighteen is one-point-three-million. That's five-point-six-four-million, plus projected another one-point-four-million next year, so that's six-point-eight-four-million. What is the explanation for topping the fund balance for the past three years? Fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, it was one-point-five, five-million. So that's where you went from seven, or nine, nine-million, to seven-point-five-million. Fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, you clicked off another million-dollar. By Christie's acknowledgment today, you clicked off another one-point-five-million for this past fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Is that correct? Okay. So that means this past fiscal year is not a balanced budget, as Jack was saying. I have a statement. Recommendations, please. The publicity, the charter calls for fifteen-thousand-dollar printing costs for the publicity budget. The budget is at least thirty-five-thousand and ten, so I ask, please make that budget cut. And I can give you the copy with the city, with the city charter. What is the fifteen-thousand-dollar consulting cost for the zoning board?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Aggittas, but I'm going to have to cut you off this long.
Take my time!
The charter, the charter says that the printing cost for the publicity budget is supposed to be fifteen-thousand dollars. I admit it's quoted, but we are going against the charter by not following it. The budget should be reduced from thirty-five to fifteen.
With three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, a one-percent tax increase.
I also suggest that you...
It's, it's, it's really not fair. I know the folks who are in forty-something for a three-hundred-dollar...
It's not true.
And then you eliminate the contingency. By doing so, you will also eliminate the need to bond for one-point-five-million dollars, which you included in your two thousand nineteen budget. Therefore, that means that each one of you know right now that in your two thousand nineteen budget, you are going to go ahead and bond again for termination salaries. So I vote that you eliminate the contingency, and then you eliminate the bond. You just saved one-point-five-million dollars. I also suggest that your revenue assumptions need to be looked at again. For the general fund, in department income, your revenue assumptions are outrageous. You're projecting a nine-point-two-percent increase in department income from two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen. Where is that one-point-eight-million in departmental income coming from? There's a lot to think about, and I really hope that all of you have the information you need to make sound decisions, because the budget is misleading and disingenuous, to use Mr. Taggins' words.
The one time that I related with you, David, I think we all want a budget for separation payouts, which, you know, ninety-nine percent of them are from folks that are under contract obligations. But if we don't bond for them now, that just means tax increase. Chrissy, can you just talk about the fund balance?
BR Controller.
So Chrissy, that's about, yeah, directly related to the secret determinations made by people putting applications in the zoning. That fifty-thousand dollars, if you don't set up people, so it's actually a big amount of fifty-thousand, so it could affect the neighbor, increase to the budget. There is not one-point-five-million-dollar contingency, there's three-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand. The other balance contingency is the separation payout. You can't, you just can't reduce the separation payout. It's not like it's going to come back. Continuity of this budget is three-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, which is less than a point. which is less than a 0.5% of the total budget. As far as the fund balance, the city has over 15 to 18 of the budgets. The city has appropriated 3.6 million dollars in fund balance to help the property tax increases each year a little less. You add fund balance, just like the last meeting, at the point where it doesn't reach to go any further below, because you will not have anything left for the future. The city has a 5% fund balance, which is given to each million-dollar budget. You have to keep a 4 million dollar fund balance, and that's about where you want. Because really, there's no more fund balance for the future. The city has an adopted policy.
Sorry.
I just have a quick question. You said the FY '17 year-end audit, which is supposed to be due within ninety days, was due, wasn't done through the staff turnover. We didn't have staff turnover until January. The report was due in the end of September. What was the staff turnover?
The report was due the end of March, because nine months from the end of your fiscal year, so June 30th is the end of March. But was the staff turnover really started last summer? I don't know. As much as she was not replaced by individual workers, Sherry James played dual roles from time that she was. So between that and not having her leave, always, that's a factor.
Mr. Mooney?
Good evening, John Mooney, E.T.B. Walker, C.S.E.A. President. We're gonna touch on a quick couple of budget notes and then get into my speech. On page six, the average median income is $84,000 to live in this state. All members average $50,000. The hundred and eighty members that we have in the general fund, which is ten and a half million dollars, bring in revenues close to $20 million. So when people say, "Why do I like the business?", we're producing. We make up 55% of the workforce and account for 35% of the budget. You cannot balance the budget on the backs of us anymore! It is not fair that the fiscal mismanagement of a select few who are no longer here fall on the back of the lowest-paid workers who live check to check. This is retaliation and it's disgusting. And the recent council vote that not passed upon is now gonna lead to layoffs and concessions. Two people turned their backs on the C.S.E.A. Can this tomorrow, it's happening? You are the elected officials here.
No.
You should be finding positive ways to help our city. Instead, the council feels the need, the whole press conference, with News 12, Verizon, what is that doing for our city? Is that helping us? All this negative attention, why aren't we demanding FEMA? Give us our money back that we worked for, that we built this city wherever it is today? That should be the question that people are asking. All these politicians, running ledges about what they should do, they should run ledges to get our FEMA money. I stand here in solid average with the police, the fire, the LBC, every single worker that works for the city of Long Beach, and every single hourly, and we are tired of being used as pawns against everybody! It has to end! A layoff to one is one too many. Thank you!
Well, council members, my name is John C. Shepherd. I am the local president of the C.S.E.A., my main office in Jericho, New York. It would be my hope that all of you sitting up there would never do anything to hurt the hard work of men and women that makes this city how great it is. In my local, along with the city of Long Beach, I directly represent seventy-six other municipalities in Nassau County. One of my other titles is Vice President of the C.S.E.A. for all of Region One's 50,000 members. Another one of my titles is Board Director for all of the C.S.E.A.'s 300,000 members. I am proud to say that currently we have over 1,200 C.S.E.A. members who live in this great city. That number is greatly enhanced. That number is greatly enhanced by family and friends. I cannot tell you, ladies and gentlemen, how to vote, but I can certainly tell you I will remember how you vote. And whatever you guys do, you're gonna have to deal with me in the future. Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me, to my name without being before you walk out of the door, you need to hear what I have to say about. That's the whole point, but for two years, you've been calling me for two years. You've been calling me for two years. Mr. Mooney, can you please at least come up here so I can explain? Can you please come, can you please come? If you're lucky enough, you can at least wait for me to answer. You don't understand what I've been done. You don't understand what I've been working, because you broke down last time. You broke it out, and you put that in your mouth. Are you breaking out of shape first? That's very unfortunate.
Shame on you, John Mooney!
That's very unfortunate.
And you're not, now, the whole...
Get your facts straight before you talk!
All right, all right, if you're leaving, please leave quietly, we can continue on meeting.
See, everybody is leaving. Everybody's leaving and we're making decisions. There are other decisions being made and you're walking out of the door. If you belong to this area, you should still be in this room with everybody else. You're asking me to turn a blind eye to improper budget procedures? That's irresponsible! You deserve better. If you walk out of the door, you'll never get it. That's what this is about, that's why I'm against the law! I'm going against the law, but you couldn't get better than this. But you're walking out of the door. You'll be coming back here again begging for mercy and to continue to use you as a tool. If you want to be used as a tool, you walk out the door. But if you don't, you stay in this room right now and address the issue. That's the only way we can move forward as a city.
Mr. Mooney! Mr. Mooney! Most of the city workers that work the garbage trucks in this city, they know me. My name is Lucy Santana. I watch you guys bust your ass. I watch you keep this city and maintain it. But I'm gonna tell you this right now. Turn your back on the wrong ones. Turn your back on the wrong ones.
We can't be stopped. We have to keep it going.
Since '78, and you're going back to '30, and it's not right. Only Miss Mooney and Mr. Fendo were willing to say his prayers. Rest in peace.
If you'd leave, please just try and be quiet, I appreciate it. Please state your name.
I'm here on behalf of all these health employees in this city to help the circumstances that we find ourselves in. First, I want to thank John Mooney for his leadership and advocacy on behalf of the C.S.E.A., who deserved every cent of the raises their contractual promise. They work hard for that. And I want to thank John Mooney for his guidance and assistance to the exents in these trying battles. The exents collectively make up less than 1.7% of the budget and are not the highest-paid employees within the city of Long Beach, and receive less benefits than any other category of employee. No overtime, no comp time, no nighttime differential, no uniform allowances, no terminal leave, and most importantly, into multiple political circumstances outside of our control, we have no job security. We are on call to work at all times with absolutely no additional compensation on nights and weekends on a regular basis and with some of the most high-stakes matters the city faces. We have all been paying 10% of the cost of our healthcare coverage for the last six years, which is an obligation that isn't imposed on other categories of employees. All of that taken together means that exents are actually one of the lowest-paid categories of employees in terms of total compensation compared to the hours worked. One can only presume that the exemption of first would be targeted purely because they collectively do not have a contract with the city of Long Beach, like every other employee in the city of Long Beach. Despite all that, and despite receiving less benefits than any other category of employee, the city council has an offer on the table for all the exempt employees wherein we may forfeit a week of pay in a voluntary furlough. That means we could forever leverage the right of five days of pay before the end of this fiscal year, resulting in real cash savings to the city, savings that are not the furlough of mandatory payment obligation and savings that do not pass the buck to the next fiscal year. Stated differently, this is half of one of our paychecks that we depend on to live, gone for good, to help the city in trying times. We sincerely hope that the council carefully considers the offer that we presented and that we're able to come to an agreement in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the exempt staff for everything that you do day in and day out. Sir, please come on up. State your name.
Okay, now, Mr. Mooney, first of all, thank you for the time that you've spent on the budget.
Speaking to the mic.
Could you buy it for better microphones? Thank you for the time that you put on this, thank you. Commissioner Lash, A.T.M., Dabney, I know this is a real house, but thank you very much. I sent you all an email with some questions and I didn't receive any response. So I'm just gonna ask them here. Could somebody just verify this for me? The Director of Community Development's salary is $129,853. Am I reading that correctly?
Yep.
Can we compare that to the previous year, see what it resonates, please? Okay. What is the difference between the brand-new position budget of Director of Transit Operations in the Central Administrative Department with a proposed salary of $117,122 and the Director of Transportation in the Transportation Department's part of the budget? An existing position with a proposed salary of $105,585. These are Director of Transit, Director of Transportation. That's over $200,000. And I'm particularly interested in these overlapping titles, knowing that the city council in February hired a third-party contractor to oversee transportation contracts. Yeah, oh, well, no, it was covered by a grant. And that should be a great saving, because it's covered by a grant, which actually you are illegally using, because the grant, I mean, well... I'm meeting with Agostino on that, the U.S.D.O.T., looking at that. Anyways, so if we've got these two positions, one seems Brendan Costello of the Transportation Department. Who's that, who's in this building that is the Director of Transit Operations? Is that Michael Robinson?
Yes.
Michael Robinson! Oh, isn't that amazing? Our deputy city manager, in addition to whatever other salaries, is going to be getting $117,000 for what does he do besides bundle? Bundle, bundle, whatever the word is, our transportation department, and I've asked for his removal no less than three times. The Director of Transportation. So we've got these two positions, over $200,000 plus the spender. My suggestion is that, as I've been asking you, Aramone, for years, to audit the Department of Transportation, because you have people in there who are political appointees. And not to mention, we have bus cuts. So, I mean, this is just insane. And I'd like to echo previous comments about my raises. Thank you.
Councilor, if I may, one more question.
Please.
The Director of Community Development's salary is $76,125, not $120,000. Don't pay $0.57.
I, did you repeat that?
Absolutely. So the Director of Community Development's salary in his proposed budget is $76,125. Don't pay $0.57.
Okay, I haven't, I told it for...
That's somebody else.
Not a person.
Now, I want to have one, please.
Catherine O'Barry, 350 East Martin Street, Long Beach. Mike, so bad. Um, I can see that the taxes are...
Louder!
I'm looking at the budget, it does say $129,853.
That was in the prior year. That's about $50,000.
I'm sorry, you, you're right.
Okay, I am grateful that the budget was scrutinized. I am grateful to John Fendo for, you know, finding some discrepancies. I'm grateful to him to vote again. I'm grateful to Mr. Mooney for voting again. I'm basically grateful that it was scrutinized. I think it needs to be super scrutinized from now on. I know that we have a commitment to unions that was contracted, but the oversight audit was missing and also I think there are some concessions that can be made by the unions. Just to get a scoreful, in the last twelve months, we've had two bonds because they had legal decisions, taxes went up. We're waiting for a third bond for the tragic Beech accident where someone was, went over. We were underinsured and I'm hoping that we are now fully insured so that we won't have to bond to pay off a judge against the city. So basically, we have had our taxes go up three times already in the last twelve months. This budget would be another increase. And then we have ISRC standing in the background asking working, middle-class, seniors, disabled people to pay taxes for wealthy corporations and the wealthy paying for that as a month in rent. I think that is probably, I mean, the whole ball laxed just too much, okay? When I looked at the budget, not as detailed as everyone else did, I saw three areas that I think could be scrutinized for further cuts. Making up a cut for just to be looked at. We're spending 4.3 million on sanitation, more than any other department in the entire city. We're spending 1.1 million on corporate council. And now I hear there's getting a $25,000 raise. I believe there's three people working there. 1.1 million is a lot of money, even for insurance. Inter-fund risk retention is 3.2 million. Frankly, I don't know...
I'm sorry, say that again.
The inter-fund risk retention is 3.2 million. I don't know what that is, but you guys probably do and I think it should be looked at. Maybe money could be reallocated from this budget. You know, I don't make $50,000 a year for union workers here. And you're literally, like someone said previously, you're taxing us out of the city. You know, we're not so strong financially that we can bear the weight of all.
So, Miss O'Barry, first of all, I appreciate you picking out specific things that we can then look at, and that's what we're here for, I appreciate that. In terms of the 14, the 4.2 million sanitation, I can tell you that, two things. One, sanitation is one of the only departments in the whole city that we actually make money on through garbage collection fees and the light. But also, our commissioner of public works has come forward with some ideas on how we can maybe streamline the process a little bit better and maybe realize some savings from our sanitation. So it is in the works and I do appreciate it.
I'm very happy with sanitation.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's not the one thing we need to do, not with the garbage.
Yeah, my same here.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir, please state your name and address. Go ahead.
Michael from the forty-nine eighty-two. I have three questions I'd like to ask. Is there any way in the budget that you plan on hiring the part timers? Why does a part timer have to work eleven or twelve years before he gets benefits? The labor is big and I'm scared because I'm not gonna make a person full-time. You know, release him. You guys don't practice that. You know, how can a labor worker work in part-time for eleven years? Is anything in the budget that you got in time to make the people get benefits or have their benefits and not work eleven years? I don't think so. Why not? This has been going on a long time. Fifty-five years old, women won't be... I think you should put some new policies in there. How can people live off of part-time pay? No benefits. You got kids. And I like to thank you, Mr. Warren, Mr. Bruno, for voting no. Why don't you take the money back that you gave to people that are still working? How do you have work? How do you have work? How does a city manager receive the paycheck and gets another paycheck? How does the council guy just give him a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars? For what? If there's always no money, this is ridiculous. How can y'all allow that to happen? You could pay someone a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars if you can't make a person full-time?
Do you want to speak to that question? Do you want to look and speak to that question in terms of the process?
No answer.
Process for...
The process for people moving, making the transition from part-time to full-time.
Nobody knows?
You're supposed to be laying the right side.
It doesn't work, I take my face places. The fact that Mr. Rand has got the eyesight sitting in the part-time position because he just laid off in the two thousand twelve cuts. So we do evaluate when we can't... We could hire all part-time to be employed, but then we blow a hole in twelve percent tax increase. So what we do is, as a person of Christian doubt, we evaluate whether we need to fill a position and then if so, we do fill it. But right now, our sanitation is running a profit and if we were to absorb the entire part-time staff, we would go into the red.
State your name and address.
Good evening, San Pinto Long Beach professional firefighters. I would have to agree with the sentiment of the gentleman just now. You guys, this is not healthy shit. What are we doing right now? We're having to divide it. The rule is divided between labor and residents. And as a labor representative and a resident, I find it embarrassing because this is how I'm... Are we actually having a budget presentation? Are you coming and asking the residents to read the sheet of paper, ask questions about cuts? Are you gonna get a presentation and tell us what great service it is that our tax dollars are going to? Can you answer that?
Yeah, no. This is for us to...
No, you're answering other people.
I'm sorry.
You guys have to do a budget presentation. Where is the actual presentation? Where is the stuff you're gonna present to all these taxpayers and workers to show the value in the workforce and the value in our hard-earned tax dollars? Where is it? It's not fair, it's embarrassing. As a resident and a person who works here, it's embarrassing that we have a divided room of people, of residents, taxpayers going against each other. You're pitting labor against taxpayers and a lot of the people are wanting to stay.
I disagree with your characterization. It's natural that there's a conflict.
Matthew Bell said it's natural. Not here, not in the country.
It's natural that there's conflict between what we pay for and where we cut it. That's natural.
In your world, I don't think there's big problems.
How about in the real world?
The real world, okay.
Right? So we don't wanna cut employees.
You don't wanna cut employees.
We don't wanna cut employees. But the taxpayer is demanding that we cut taxes, right? So it's natural conflict.
You're giving exempt employees twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar raises while threatening to cut people for the paycheck to paycheck. That's natural?
No, it's not really that. You're paying your own money, sir. You're paying your own money.
I see right here that we have a new position in the city clerk's office. New position, eighty-four thousand dollars. Why are we creating that position?
I'm sorry, which position?
New position, city clerk's office, eighty-four thousand dollars. Why are we calling that position?
Because we need those positions, I would assume this is...
You're getting rid of a deputy city clerk for sixty-eight thousand. What's the non-linear change?
Why don't we talk about concessions to the fire department soon?
Obviously, what you colors are coming in. Fair. You have a bone to pick and it's obvious.
I have no bones to pick, sir.
You obviously do.
I don't.
You're... you gave the exempt employees who worked very hard over two and twenty-eight percent raises over the last eight years, correct?
How much?
Two percent raises. Post-living period.
Mr. Vito, why don't you tell them, tell us what they worked at?
I work every day. This is a time of... I'm paying every single dollar. I'm tired of you not working every day.
If you were ever, if you were ever, I would want to go to meetings for that. I would want at the last meetings to see me. I would want at the last meetings that took the difficult decision to vote in favor of the bond so that we didn't lay off any employees. I did it for a hundred and eighty-five percent. They were the tables in and at her to make it so that nobody had to be laid off, whether they were...
How would you review those layoffs, not those payoffs? Council review. The city council...
We will have to review.
No, you do a review. You have a voting board for it. You do a review.
I'm not getting a pension review board. Absolutely not.
You voted in favor of something.
We should have... And when I said I voted in favor of it, it was not with an understanding that those payouts were to be inspected and reviewed. I specifically said it, I believe. And we all thought, and to the extent that they can be recollected and improper, then they should be. And I believe that every single member of this council has said that.
This is a manufactured fiscal crisis.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. A manufactured fiscal crisis.
Not manufactured, but there are employees who unfortunately have to go to bed fearing that their votes will lose their job.
I've heard that way for years.
That was not something that I was willing to be okay with.
By the way, we're still borrowing. We're still borrowing for a tax.
Why are you raising?
We found money in the...
Why? We found money. Are you still getting out raises and creating...
We're still a bond. We're still bonding for it.
I understand you still have a bond. My question is, are you still filling these positions and covering up the questionable payouts and the separation of service that never occurred?
None of us are covering up any payments. President Arango himself spoke with the Controller office and they're coming in and doing a review of all of the payouts.
Do we start with the claim that people are striking that law and not deciding about it?
Every single member of this council is in favor of an outside evaluator to come in and look at those payouts. Every single one of us.
Okay, so back to my question. You guys are...
Very clear at the time, you weren't aware of that.
You guys are living in a world of trucks, right? If I ask you to talk, where's the budget presentation? Honestly, where does the presentation help show the value while we're getting twelve percent tax increase? Where is it? A piece of paper, no, you gotta get up here, you have to find what you're offering. You tell people what they're getting. That's what you should be doing. The school's doing, the library's doing, everyone else is giving presentations and you guys are standing here pointing out a piece of paper with hidden jobs and hidden moves in personnel. Okay? Take it. No, real presentation. And so I do ask that we should go over the new creative positions that are being put in. And I also ask that positions that are grant-funded should be lined up as grant-funded as well. And I want to close with this, definition of extortion, the practice of stealing something, especially money through force or threats.
Six seven, twenty-five, West Park Avenue. First of all, I want your advocacy. Only two people on this board have come down all over this city for that. Number two, everybody up here, paid for the employee, other than the city council? You all paid for the employee? Give up your salaries and put them back in the budget and let these people be able to go to sleep at night knowing they have a job. The reason I say that? I've been here many, many years. I stopped coming because of the BS that was being here in town. Okay? In the seventies and the eighties during the Bradish regime, we went through the same BS. You're going backwards. This is two thousand eighteen. You're supposed to be visiting things, not screwing them up. And you've got people on pins and needles. This city is losing its residents that have been here all their lives. They are not being able to live a life that's comfortable for them anymore. On top of which, you make very, very snide comments or you make people feel like they're beneath you. I'm not... I've been here fifty-three years and I can tell you this right now. I'm not going anywhere. And when I do go, it's because I wanna go. And I will vote for the person that's right for the job, not somebody who has pulled because their family members have something to say so that they can get on the board for something, somebody paid somebody. I didn't ask for that. But I will tell you this. I've been patronage with Citibank for twenty-eight years. Bounced two checks, raised four children as a single parent, took people, kids in my neighborhood, on my dollar, out to the city, to the island and everything else. I have ten credit cards, never ever filed for bankruptcy, never been evicted, all my bills are paid. I wanna be the city controller.
Yeah, we're all for economic constraints. And there were many interesting concessions that were brought up by many of our residents here. And they should be considered, especially those spoken by Mary Bolusette of Time and Passion, who both of them were right on target. Yeah, the unions did give concessions and it's heartbreaking that they have to. I think that it's time that we stop trying to balance out whether it's on the background of working men and women who are the backbone of our city and still looking at those people that are exempt, that are non-union. You know, you can do shared services. You can combine department heads. You know, you know, Pliss, County, we have the same problems. We are without money. We have financial constraints. We have a NICA board that's overseeing us. So we've taken some jobs. We've taken three department heads and combined, they got rid of them, they laid them off with non-union people. They gave two each jobs, all right? So they took three titles, each a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars each, got rid of them, and one person at a time, and they head of human services and gets ninety-five thousand dollars a year. These are real savings, you know, that we can accomplish. We have those, well, when you have your vacant and funded positions, you know, you have jobs that are CSBA titles that really have no employees in them, don't put page huge jobs, page huge people into them. Don't move them from one job to put them into civil service. I think that's reprehensible. It should never become. Civil service, to me, is a very sacred system. And I look at this, and everybody has to take a test to be able to qualify to get to civil service. Those lists are established. Those people pay to take those tests. They wait and wait through this new phase. And they pay to count to the city, to the county, to the state, for anybody who does it, that takes civil service and uses it as a subsidy bank to put, to hire people in. I think it has to be so. You know, we talked about the deficit that was left by the previous administration. It was addressed. You know, it was twelve million dollars. You remember in January thirteen, twenty thirteen, and January twenty fourteen, we collected two-thirds of that money because we divided it into three years? So we paid two-thirds of that. In twenty fourteen, in the mid-year, the state then allowed the city to be able to bond the money. So even though we only owed about eighty-four million dollars, we ended up taking the bond almost, I think it's fourteen million, we probably can correct me if I'm wrong. So when you look at this, that we then entered a bonding, and that prevents what the states do an annual budget review because we have that bond. And, you know, just to let you know, the Controller is not auditing your budget right now. Because according to the letter that was sent to Jack Schimman, the city council last year, he said, "The scope of our review does not constitute an audit under generally accepted government audit standards." They do not quote comments and make specific recommendations on public policy decisions such as type of level of services under consideration if you provide it. So they do look, so all they're doing is they're just doing a budget review. They're looking at the budget that you're proposing, they're looking at your expenses and your revenues. And yes, the Controller's assistant, Gabe, did say, I know that you want to meet with you. He cannot be free to do more of you because that is an open meeting. But yes, he did wrap it up. He did extend an invitation to both Tom Bento and then Mr. Moore to meet with him. And he will take some questions from some of the public I can pass on to him for different things that you wanna say. We have to bring this city back, all right? This is terrible. It is a disgrace. Just bear with me for one moment because you know what? I've lived here. I've lived here for thirty-eight years. I cannot see what has happened to us lately. With I-STAR and even with this, we're repaying once again union people against the residents. This is such stuff. This is an embarrassment. And I'm looking to each and every single one of you, you better all start sharing information. Don't start telling them when they have the separation payments. I did ask in this morning, I did ask Tom Bento, has any information been given to justify the hundred eight thousand dollars that was given to Jack Schimman? When everybody who takes a look at that payout cannot understand how it can be anything more than fifty-two thousand, you cannot hide behind the seats that you're standing up there. You are out in the public, you owe it to the public. Oh, nothing, you guys. Oh, nothing.
Let me say, I was told that it is an audit is what to do and maybe that's not the right word, that's the word I use and not the word I just mentioned. But also, we did ask in terms of reviewing the payouts, we did ask them to review the payouts and we've given them the pay, the drawdowns and the termination pay sheets to the Controller 's office for the last, I think, six or seven years. So we are seriously looking at it. I don't think there's one council member up here, and I know you specifically were calling on Councilwoman Mar Mendo, but there's not one council member up here that was happy to find out about the way it's been done. And it's something that, while we can't address right this minute because we have the budget, there are no payments being done at this time unless it's gonna be contractual from a union. And moving forward, we're gonna get to a point where that's gonna change.
And I appreciate that, but let's go specifically. I was in at the city council meeting and I watched everything on video. And I know that you're gonna get, and I understand because of your terminology, that the Controller will be doing an audit once his budget review is over, that he has that...
It's six to nine months or something?
Yeah, yeah, and that will be done. But just, let's be clear. The question is, that I'm asking, is I understand you have to give the payout if you give a lot of stuff, information to the Controller's office. What I'm asking for is the sheets that we use and to come up with the payouts that were given to the people who are not separating from the payroll and even for our city manager. I wanna see, and I think everybody in this building wants to see, if you want to see black and white, how you computed, how he was able to get a hundred eight thousand dollars when we have a city council member who can only justify and figure out that he should only have paid maybe fifty-two or fifty-four thousand dollars? That, to me, should not be something that we need to wait for. These people were paid and there has to be associated documentation that justifies it. All we're asking for is, give us that information and maybe you'll restore some of our confidence that we may have, that we can have in you. That's all I'm asking. And we should have it tonight.
First of all, I wanna thank you for voting for the I.A.M. with the city for the bus transportation, but we haven't received the money since two thousand and fifteen. It's my understanding that it's either via the NIFA or from county approval system, but there is money that the city has moved for the year of two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that would go quite a long way at this point.
And you know what? That brings me to something really important. Just, you know, bear with me for a second. Let me explain about that, okay? Because the previous administration, I'm not really surprised to a certain degree that we're here, that last year we were told we had a nine million dollar surplus and lo and behold, here we are, we can't even pay our workers, okay? We want to lay them off and who knows what else? We ended up with the buses even though we paid them twenty-five thousand dollars. It has been systematically with the previous administration and you were involved, so that... They just didn't seem to want to bother. They just didn't seem to want to bother, to fill out paperwork that was necessary. They could, even though when you reach out, even as myself, I don't care who the city, I'm a Republican, Democrat, I will work with every administration, I will do the best that I can, because I want to work with the residents, alright? So even with that, I want to tell you something, we had a hearing on that, and we had a commissioner of public works, alright? And it turned out that they were stung, they could not believe that they would send a contract to the city every year that said seventy-five thousand dollars. And guess what, whoever was head of the transportation department, the city manager, couldn't be bothered to fill out something that had to be filled out for every year, every day, every season. So what happened is, so they, so we had to, we had to pressure them and constantly get touch with the city, and say to them, please, fill out this paperwork, and just guess what? We now owe you two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and we want to pay you, okay? They couldn't be bothered, you know what it felt like as a kid, stop? Born rain, that's exactly what Jack Schimman tells about the finances of this city, couldn't care less, collect the money from what money sellers do, and now we're stuck here, wondering what we're going to do for the future.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, and that's why I'm asking, we can work together to ensure that that money is paid, so that we can restore the life. I'm trying to make sure that all the paperwork is done, all the approval is with the county, and that's not, it's not that.
Well, you know, I'll give you the representation, why do you call the new controller and they are considering?
I can just address one point. Let's say, of course, thank you, and I think we all join along on the same issue. Everyone up here wants to see how the payouts are calculated, everyone wants to see it all together. The immediate issue was how to fill the gap, and then go back, almost as if in this car accident. The immediate issue, stop the hemorrhaging, then see who's at fault. That was what I said. But I can see how to go forward, but not forgetting that we want to look back and see what happened, by whom and what.
And I want to echo what you just said, and that's why I have serious concerns tonight, being that the words were used tonight, manufactured crisis. If indeed you're all on the same page about it, and you all agree that this is what's happening, then why were two council members pointed out tonight by our CSBA members?
I also like that, Ms. Ward, for your benefit, I've asked for all the payout sheets. I haven't gotten them, but I've asked for them.
Why's that?
Because they're doing the Bendo and Nissa Moore, what they internalize. It's a secret.
I want to address this two-point-one million dollar bond. I want to address the two-point-one million dollar bond that keeps coming up tonight as a sort of, who drew who on the clock, or doesn't care. Quite frankly, a twelve-year-old with a calculator could assume there was something wrong with it. You know, this, all likelihood, people didn't have the information they needed to make an educated decision about it. But, there's an interesting reason you haven't seen it come back onto a council agenda, since it happened. Our bond council took a look at that bond, and said, absolutely not, after the fact. And there's even questions if it was even legal. So, and I'm not saying it was malice, it may just been people didn't have the information necessary to make the decision. But that's where we are now. It's a simple fact that, when we have dealt with here, so there were a lot of hands in the cookie jar, and that cookie jar is empty. So what we're dealing with now is, quite frankly, a tax increase in a budget that, quite frankly, sucks, and we can put that in a minute. And the potential for layoffs, and the problem is, is, we all, this is something we all have to solve together. It has to be solved together, because there is no pretty solution here. We have people that want a dollar fifty worth of services, but only want to pay a dollar for it. We have people that don't want layoffs, but we don't have enough money to pay them. That's where we are right now. And it's going to take some very difficult decisions. Quite frankly, for five of us sitting up here, and it's going to be things that you people aren't going to like, the workers aren't going to like, and none of us is going to like. But that's where we are right now, unfortunately. So, what I would personally like to see, I know I came in with fifty questions at the start, but I said I was going to hold mine off, because I wanted to hear from people tonight. I would actually like to hear people come up here tonight with their ideas of how we can fix this. Because coming up and telling us, you can't raise my taxes twelve percent, I get it, I get it, I'm in the same boat, I live here too. Help us fix this, come up here and give us some solutions.
Stop buying flowers, buy flower pots. Find that out, if you want to, if anybody says that's fine.
And let me just address that.
You're spending a lot of money on that.
You're right.
You're not going to be able to stay here.
Right, but we have a systemic problem. You know, cutting flower pots, cutting here, there, we have a systemic problem, we need to overhaul things, quite frankly. We need to change the way we do it. And that's going to mean, people might have to accept, they may have to pay more for what they have if they want to keep it. And, well, you might have to make decisions about what you might be willing to sacrifice not to pay for. And the same goes for our city workforce as well, they have to be part of this solution. Well, I know I'm not, apparently I'm not the first person to card this, but C.S.E.A., but. But they have to be part of this solution.
Or get their personal cars filled up by the city gas.
You're right, we need to look at everything, that's why. I'm just saying, we all have to do this together, but this is going to be painful every now and then.
Six thousand dollars for a household that we pay when we lift a house, the city waterworks, six thousand dollars for residents. Where's all that money going? There had to be a thousand houses lifted in town, six hundred dollars right there, where is it?
I'm in the middle of my house, right now. I'm emptying out my bank account right now, because it's in my house, so.
Nobody knows where that money goes?
Alright, so, just to echo what Councilman Bendo said, that is why we're here, to hear your solutions, what you're willing to lift out, what you're willing to pay for, if anyone, you know. I know the exempts keep coming up, and there are all standing here tonight, there's fourteen of them. If we got rid of all of them, it's one point seven percent of the budget, so there needs to be more than just that, even. That's an exempt position. Go ahead, sir, please state your name and address, we'll get this made back on track.
I'm here in Portland, on Main York. To begin with, I want to say something, and in so disrespect to the C.S.E.A. membership and the additional members, I think there are just twelve other people. The council represents about thirty-five thousand people, not just twelve other people. So if they find something that's wrong, or needs to be questioned or looked at, I think that takes precedence over the minority membership in the community, and it's got to be for the betterment of the community. So I don't blame John or Nissa for doing what they did at the last meeting. Secondly, I have to say, when I come up here, and I come to meetings, and I listen to them, I sometimes, correctly tonight, feel like I'm at a management meeting of a chance. Because it's like, we all just sort of like love to give things away to friends and family, and whatever little thing comes along that sounds like a great idea, let's just put some money to it, instead of looking at the bottom line, at the end of the year, and the actual process. For example, I was going through the budget, but she hadn't moved a cent tonight. And I saw that the health and welfare represents about twenty-five percent of the budget. Now, health and welfare usually represent twenty-five percent of salaries. So you're way beyond that kind of a number. And so it just demonstrates how much you're giving away, I don't know if it's collective bargaining issue, or whether it's just generosity on the part of the city, but I mean, that's something that needs to be looked at. And the other thing I looked at was the overtime, was the police department. There used to be one time, what they called the one-hundred club, which was all the members of the city who made more than a hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, that's a ridiculous thing when you consider, I went through the budget, and there was over twenty that made more than two hundred thousand dollars a year. And when I counted up all the other people going down the list, on just the first credit page, which was a hundred, there was a hundred of them, I stopped at a hundred, and they all made into the hundreds of thousands. And the top runner was a retired leader who pulls in over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, which is, you know, a lot more than mine. So, you know, there's some need for oversight on the part of what's going on, going down the road. The other thing I noticed was regarding the employee benefits. The employees get not only insurance paid more, and not only insurance, which is just up to most of you are, but they're also co-paid, they're part of these premiums, well, they get those paid as well. Now, it seems as though there's absolutely no apothec cost for that for anything. And you don't know if it's spent on your family or just inversely, but it seems like an old, regenerative benefit package for people. So, I guess my time is up, y'all want to leave for the issues, but I think there's got to be some close scrutiny in treating this, not as somebody's little mom and pop company. It's a hundred dollars, a hundred million dollars corporation. It's not a documented operation, it's a big business, and you got to treat it like a big business in order to make a run on an even keel.
Just saying, that's a story, that is all contractual, and it is one of the things that I think, when we do lobbying with all the units, it's the first thing that is asked for continuously, is for some participation into the whole campaign, the first thing, every single time. Please state your name and address, man.
Okay, sorry. Everyone who has to report me, they are so knowledgeable, they have more experience with city council than I do. So I would ask that everyone refrain from making any facial expressions, because I have seen that quite often tonight, actually, and I do find that to be unprofessional. Making a poker face, that's all. Okay, so I just have a couple of questions about Francis. The first thing that, sorry, the first thing that clears out to me is the court counsel's salary. So I see there's one hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine, two thousand and eighteen, and then it jumps to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight for two thousand and nineteen. Now, mind you, from what I've heard here, that's, I think that's what everybody's talking about, when they said twenty-five thousand dollar rate, but why? Can someone answer that?
He knows where the bodies are buried.
Why the rate? Yes.
Sure, I actually, again, had a raise last year, and I was confused to stay when I received a job offer at the end of December last year. Actually, I received several offers, and pretty much accepted one. I was confused to stay, and I received a raise as part of the package check that night.
So if this package is an ad-will employee status, or is this a?
I'm always an ad-will employee, yeah.
Okay, so then you can forego the rate then? Yes, yes.
I can't answer that, I mean, yes.
I'm not asking if you will, I'm asking if you do.
Do you want my answer? Alright, that's fine, you made your point, thank you. You made your point, you want to hear my response, that's fine.
Well, now, tell me that you don't.
No, we're done.
Not give the rate, it seemed like it's not contractual, it seems, not with that, but anything that is contractual can be amended. So I'm worried, if you'd like to see.
I think I, I'm comfortable responding to that. I was here in December, wait, I'm going to answer your question that you just asked. You just asked a question, I can't answer on his behalf, I can answer on my own behalf. While the decision wasn't mine specifically, there was a concern, particularly when he said that he was going to leave and go to another municipality, that our council, at a time when there was no, at a time when a number of our staff had believed that it wasn't safe or very good judicial advice to have our city, our court counsel leave the city at the same time. There's a number of pending litigation, where the city has quite a bit at stake, everybody here is aware of most of them, and we all saw, as we, as the city manager at the time, that this was an important decision to be made in order to retain our legal counsel, like him or not, I happen to like him, but there are no exceptions, because that decision was made in order to keep him here.
Well, even if that's a decision that was over at the time. I'm thinking, now, taking the personal aspect out of it, and looking at it as. Taking the personal aspect out of it, because we did make a comment that you do have this, like, taking the personal aspect out of it, and looking at it as in a business way, okay? Was there another senior ACC who could have stepped in and acted as an acting court counsel?
The final decision was not mine, but I don't believe this at all, okay? At a time when our city is facing a number of large litigation, it did not seem prudent at all to lose our lead counsel.
Now, jumping into the commissioner of buildings, because that's another twenty thousand dollars that we could forego on funding, that would be my suggestion, so one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars for the budget in two thousand and eighteen, to one hundred and forty thousand dollars, one hundred and forty, one hundred and forty, three hundred and fifty thousand, four thousand dollars for the commissioner of the Department of Buildings, why? Is that also contractual, or is that ad-will or joint status?
Yes, as I answered earlier, he took on the OEM job, that we were authorized to hire for about a hundred and forty thousand, which would have been great fun for the first year, and if you talk about the city's government. Instead, we took thirty-eight thousand dollars, and we split that between director of OEM, assistant director of OEM, so that they're doing extra work, and the impact on this current budget is only thirty-four thousand.
So there's no way to freeze this at all, there's no way that they would accept to freeze their salary increase. Here's the thing, I'm a former government employee in the city, and I, in my third year, I made less money than I did in my second year. Why? Because there wasn't enough money in the city to do that. I'm okay with that, I can do that, and I worked overtime, I worked nights, I worked weekends, and I didn't get to do overtime on any of that. So you're telling me that nobody on the higher-ups of the city can take a higher, like, take a salary freeze, a week?
Maybe like five days.
No, that's, what I mean, I don't mean five days, like, for an entire two years. Like, in two thousand and eight, when there was a higher salary freeze, and then they don't, they not even get breaks for four years.
The exempts there is a very dedicated group of individuals that run the markets, that run the city. So if you want to get rid of all the exemptions, give the city manager, Mr. Shand, two of them. And then who runs the police department, who runs the city? You get rid of the elite.
That's our camera.
Yes. Salary freeze translate to getting rid of someone, if not getting rid of them, if not terminating someone, if they, let's not freeze their salary for a couple of years, let's just see and how we can stop the hemorrhaging, as you stated earlier.
Please state your name and address.
How you doing, Pastor Garcia, two twenty-five West Park Avenue, you pick over, if he's a resident, everybody knows me. Commissioner, I'm going to answer everything. I'm not going to ask you to put the ball down, on Front Street. I know some of you calling it where Front Street is, okay, that's how long it's been here. Front Street is slow, used to be Front Street, particularly. Mr. Fandillo, you said what, you want some good suggestions, right, you make some money? Okay, that's your job, but, you guys, but I said it when the Republicans had the party, you wouldn't be here now dealing with this, you wouldn't be increasing the property tax. Put the parking meters back on Park Avenue. Put the parking meters back on Park Avenue, I got something to tell you. I spoke to the business owners, and they're not opposed to it, they're for it. They say people are parking in front of businesses, the plazas, everything. You have to ask for it, you have to send it, you have to try to take it and clean it up. Of course, in that case, a lot of money here. Everybody's, in the only city in this country where there's not a parking meter, even Fruitport, Fruitport hasn't bought it either. Now watch this. Lancher, all the Republicans bought for free. Lancher, all the companies park for free. The company's making millions of dollars. We own two buildings there, all of them from Lafayette, all of them from Monroe. Greenport, on tax payings dollars. Now, I calculated that $2 a car in an hour, like they have the machines. They'll come out, they'll put it for nothing, and you pay more, and you don't get that money. I spoke to the business owners, and they're for it. They're losing business, because people park here all day long, move their cars around, watch for specials. No disrespect, they're doing a fantastic job, the city workers are special. There's only so much you can do. The chalk and the tile don't work anymore. A little powder added, and everything may erase it. That's it, you know? So, I'm gonna tell you right now, it's calculated from, from loyalty, even loyalty. Lord of the Church, man, oh, the rest, they say that people park here, you can park for a customer. Watch this. You're losing $20,000 to $25,000 a day. No meetings. You believe that? $25,000 a day. Guess what? We would be here. And you've got a half a million dollars, right, Commissioner, right? You got a half a million dollars you found somewhere, there's a deposit. Okay, and you got the beach pass money going on sale soon? What is that gonna bring a revenue? Another million and a half, close to your take? I voted for the, I voted for the raise on the increase for the Republicans at the party. But when I tell you to park meters, you don't look at each other. I'm just telling you now, you've got to do something. You can't kill the taxpayers. You can't. You can't kill the taxpayers and the workers here. You can't.
I know.
You know? All right, I understand, I understand. As for the Commissioner, maybe you get a little power violation? Let's get a new town. We've got plenty of property back there, two police tow trucks. Police always send their tow trucks, start showing trucks. Why ask? It's somebody else. Put the money in the city's pocket, the city's pocket. I'm not mad.
All right.
I'm not blaming you guys, I'm not blaming anybody. But guess what? Police, NYPD's got it. Everybody's got their own police trucks. Of course, you know what? Keep the money in the house, don't give it away.
Goodbye, please. I want to thank you for bringing a tangible, something that we can talk about. Parking meters is definitely something that's on the table, and I appreciate it. I appreciate it. I thank you. I appreciate it.
Then they have to hire a ticket agent.
Please state your name and address.
225 West Fifth Street. So, I've never lived in this city, and I'm careful not to have to still honor the property taxes here. We prepare, and I have to tell you, they're much higher. I understand the impact. I've lived here since November 2016, and I have heard a violent community here tonight, shocked me actually, because I don't know all of these issues yet, I'm learning. Everybody in this room has responsibility, and I have not heard that individually said by anybody that got a pay. I've heard activation back and forth. I'll tell you this, this is the safest city I have ever lived in my life. Not anybody makes it over $50,000 a year, I have no idea. I can afford this 12% increase, good for me. But what I expected tonight, and I haven't heard, I asked the public to come up, like me and others, come up with parking meter ideas, and all of this all break. The views send me seats every day. I expected to hear two things today. One, 12.5%, or whatever the increase was, I didn't expect that. Maybe it's a fine, maybe it's not. But what I did hear from this council was huge proposals, what the opposite will be. To put it to the public, to come up, everybody's had agreements, everybody has an idea, small bits and pieces. That's great, and some of them are already being considered, as you said. But where is, if we had to cut 5 million, what would it look like to the public? And for everybody in the room to be quiet while they listen to that? So they can hear the truth? Now, there's lots of issues that you have. You've obviously had corruption in the past. I mean, I almost am questioning that I actually moved here without knowing.
Welcome on, we're looking right at it.
Everybody needs help, sorry. Everybody needs voice. We have got people here angry at everybody's salary. We're not one person here who hurt any of those salaries. Many of us couldn't imagine living on them. So, the real question was, why didn't you come to us tonight with real proposals? Whether they got accepted or not? And ask everybody, like the general account, how I think I want to do it, your condition, from you? I begrudge you your salary that they saved you to not go. The fact that we don't have employees surrounding out of the city already, but everybody's worried about if somebody makes $5,000 or $10,000 more. Yeah, that adds up. That is, like you said, not going to fix the budget. But what we didn't hear was, what would you honestly do? And then let us come back to the next one and hear it, and come back and say, no, we're not gonna take 2 million out for this. So, I found tonight disappointing. But you have to, I'm not here judging the work, and I'm not judging the local residents. I can't, I'm not in that position. But this is the safest city I have ever lived in my entire life. And that is faced with something, so don't lose sight of everybody. If you gotta cut 5 million dollars, know where you're gonna cut it. Don't begrudge everybody, the union, I'm speaking for five people who didn't get up tonight.
Talk to your neighbors.
But let's see you come and dare with real proposals. Ones that don't necessarily affect the police and the union, ones that maybe they do, I don't know. I haven't heard it all. But come and show us big ideas, and let's see whether this city wants a 12% increase, because maybe they will accept it, maybe they won't. But from what I heard tonight, I wouldn't have any ability to make the decision on that. And that was a lost opportunity tonight.
Thank you, sir. What I would say is, if you just give me one second, is we had decided as a council to listen tonight and to take notes, and then we're gonna meet, and then we have the second budgetary meeting. But I understand your point, and it does make perfect sense. We didn't ask for some sort of menu, like what does 5 million look like? What would you cut? If we cut 2 million, what does it look like? If we had sanitation one day a week, which I'm not advocating for, but if we had sanitation one day a week, what would that look like? So, we were planning on bringing that.
Exactly that, taking this opportunity by doing it the way you always do it.
I understand your point.
We're gonna let the public come in, so the confusion itself leads to it. Maybe this could have been a two-part council meeting.
There is a second budgetary meeting, too, which is a missed opportunity.
I think it would.
I understand.
And yes, let's hear what it's like to go to trash one day a week. Let everybody figure out how to recycle better and stop wasting as much. But bring it to us. Maybe you'd be surprised if people accept one day a week.
Right.
And the for-profit, I don't know that, I understand, I'm not answering for anyone.
Right, right. I really appreciate it.
And let us get back up here with another one of these meetings where you do that. And then let's see how the public is gonna react. That would be amazing.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
My name is Paul Butler. I live at 120 West Beach. This topic that was brought up at this meeting, before the last phase, had to do with payouts. It was discussed, brought up, it was discussed, it was brought up, nothing has been resolved. Who is going to be accountable for resolving this, or addressing it? Like getting the sheets, finding someone who has the sheets? Who will take possession of them or copies of them, and figure out if they've done correctly? Everybody is excited about the fact that people are paid excessively. If you believe that people are paid excessively, it needs to be resolved. It may not be that significant financially, but it represents possibly corruption, which nobody wants to see or hear about. Nobody wants it to exist, they want to hear about it if it does exist, and they want it to be resolved and reversed. So, who is going to take responsibility for it?
Well, sir, there is an ongoing audit right now by the New York State Controller, and they're going to receive...
Not an audit.
Not an audit.
You're looking at it probably in what?
Probably this week, but that's the first step, is provide requested information to the New York State Controller.
Is it baiting them?
It's not an audit.
Okay, who wants to acquire the draw?
It's not an audit.
No, I'm talking to the New York State Controller, and they're auditing the council right now. I'm talking to Aaron.
Does the city have a chief financial officer?
Yeah, he's one, right now, yes.
Okay, who is that person?
Erin Daney.
Is she's okay?
I don't believe so, no.
Is she charter account?
I'm sorry.
Is she a charter accountant?
Charter accountant, I don't know.
All right.
I don't understand your question.
I'm trying to figure out what credentials, if somebody were to become the chief financial officer of General Motors, they would have some credentials.
No question, no question, because she's an acting controller. And our search for the controller is ongoing.
Sir, if I can also respond. Right after the last meeting, together with the council, and together asked whether there would be an audit of those, whatever was paid, and after the state controller, not the county controller, but the state controller, in order to look into it. It should be an independent review, not somebody who's here, not somebody who works for this state, or who, not the county controller, the state. So, we all decided that at the council. We met quickly after, after two weeks ago, within a few days, and we decided that at the council, that that was the approach that we were going to take.
Do you even have some of those mickey lorry volleys? I don't have specific ideas, but I put packages together for you. Each name is here, so you could take it. We did, Mr. Fraser, I looked through T U two as well. Right, there's the... I don't expect to... You have answers tonight, but what I would have expected is once the controllers left, either engage with the CPA firm, the union folks, and maybe have them assist in the budget. Maybe that has happened. I don't know the answer to it. But last year, when I was here, the city manager did a budget presentation, and I emailed this Hightower about 50 or 60 questions four or five days before the hearing, in consideration for a hard time to research, review it, and possibly answer hundreds of people's questions. I gave the same list I just gave to you to this Hightower. Some of these questions have already been addressed, some have been answered. For one question, I got a couple of questions, and I can give you, I can give you a lot of advice how to better raise revenue, some of which I mentioned to a former city manager. Nothing is done, but to look into it or not, I don't know, it never got back to me. There's revenue sources. I think you need a budget of citizen advisory committee. I'm sure there's a lot of people that would help, that they would open it. I don't think you tapped into the citizens and the talent here, the youth that possibly... When I say you, I'm just saying, you're not getting the talent and the community involvement that is out there. Trust me, a lot of people are very talented. So, let me move on, let me move on to the time. In this federal aid account, A0040, I would estimate we should be receiving at least $3 million this upcoming fiscal year, and yet, I think it's maybe 300, something, 315,000 proposals. Nobody has a crystal ball, but if we're looking to bond for 4 million to close out some projects later on tonight, there has to be a map somewhere. So, if you're spending it, there's gotta be revenue source, and I think we need answers from representatives at FEMA, the doctor's office, the people who are involved. These are questions that have to be asked and answered. That's, and we'll cut you off in five minutes. Okay. Ms. Hightower, my last, I want to use some more information to... I will just read it, Mr. Fraser, the old line for the council. He did quake it on Paul and Paul. Passage of the budget. The budget shall be adopted by resolution, and attached to the budget, and may impart thereof, shall be a personnel roster, which shall include the physician or title of all employees of the city of Long Beach, together with the department that they are assigned to and account number to which their salaries shall be charged. In addition thereto, said personnel roster shall contain the current salary of said employees, and you can read the rest. This is really to give to possibly the newer council members that may not be aware of the procedure. Maybe it's for current council members that don't know the procedure, or maybe not refreshed. Thank you very much for your evening. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Name and address.
Jordan Parkus, 370 West Olive. We can no longer deduct any tax increase based on the Trump tax rules. I understand the 12.3% increase. You all know the school tax increase is here. I started slumming, but Amistad Trader, and I'm a train driver, so I get the whole big picture. Had the big picture here that I'm saying, what happens when we get the final judgment for Haberman? Then what do we do? Because this 12.3, I mean, you're telling everyone here to eat it, you've heard some people say that you can't afford it, but that's a major, major lawsuit against us. What do we do then? What do we tell the city now? What can we do? I know I'm looking at you, and I know you don't really have a response, but that's a response we all have on our faces, because we all know it's out there.
You're absolutely right, and that damage request is coming up on October. And right now, we've got together a pretty impressive team of experts, and lawyers, and that's the case. At the moment, that's all we can do.
I understand that. That dwarfs 12.3%, because that's something that pushes the city way past the edge. It's money that we just don't have, and I don't even think we can borrow it.
We're looking at the argument, the exposure is very serious.
Right, I mean, we've spoken well, and, you know, I told you repeatedly to just say, look, we don't have it, and that does push us to municipal bankers, and that's the scary part.
I did, please, I'm gonna be the trouble. I don't think the message tonight from this council, or anyone in this room, is that if anyone wants to increase to 12%, as a matter of fact, it's the exact opposite, we're looking for it each and every way, so we can see her in the requests and suggestions, parking meters, anything. But the reality is, even if the question proposed was 1%, the result of the Haberman lawsuit would still be catastrophic.
Correct.
It's two different animals at this point. So, tonight, we're focused on the 12, to see how we get, and what's on the plane in front of us right now. The Haberman, we're gonna have to see how that unfolds, but we're all on the same page. No one wants to see 12% of this, no one. No one wants to see the judgment of Haberman soon, but this is what we have control of, likely, tonight. So, that's what we're looking for.
Okay, well, big picture, I'm scared. Okay, if you saw a massive room full of people, as you did earlier, with scared people, you know, imagine something that Commissioner Tagg is gonna have people standing outside saying, we're full. Okay, because that's what's gonna happen, and it's a scary part. Okay, and thank you for trying to work your way through this, but when we can borrow 2.1 million, can you imagine if the judgment backed to 2003 equates to 100 million? Big picture, that is scary. Thank you for that.
I'm sorry, come on up, Kim. Please, your name and address.
Hi, I'm Valerie, I'm one of the Marines, and I worked for one month. My first duty. I'm sorry, I'm complicating, and I can't wait to, I've been on the war and many things, but I do have a question about all sorts of paid work going ahead, right, and we need somebody to complain and keep our corporation healthy here that's gonna be dedicated to the long run. So my question is, what is happening on my end, permanent city manager?
So, we have the news not too long ago, and we're continuing on process. The last few weeks were the bonding issue and now the budget, so it just kind of gets delayed a little bit.
Okay, but if this is gonna happen, like, the groundwork being laid, there should probably be a person who's gonna execute that groundwork. And with all due respect, you're doing two jobs. Do you think you have the time to dedicate to this moment, where you have this huge amount of work to be done? Can you do both those jobs, or should the search really get, is the search going? Are you taking these appointments or is that happening?
We've been doing, we did interviews, we've second-hand interviews, we've done.
Okay. And how, Commissioner Tagg, I guess I'm different, do you feel right now that you have the time to dedicate to the decision?
I do work an inordinate number of hours to handle the tasks, and I promised the city that I would take it with no compensation until they found something. And I will do my best to accommodate.
Okay, so is there, just in the ideal world, that you have a high one, and you would like to see somebody to be part of the process from the ground up?
You know, I'm hoping after the budget, if we get through the budget soon.
Okay, which is what?
Which is this mine. This is mine, this is the budget, and that would be my hope.
I think that we're, I think that we're on the stage in the process, we'll narrow it down to a number of individuals. There are still some council members who have a few questions that they want answered. It's a very difficult decision, as you just mentioned, it's an enormous task to run a city, in particular, in the situation we're in now. And everybody's questions need to be answered before a decision can be made, but we've had a number of meetings where we've interviewed a number of different individuals, even on a weekend, but not that we don't have your agents together, but I think that we're narrowing down the search, and we all hope that we have an answer, and a selected individual who will be voted on by the council in the next couple of weeks, as soon as we go past the budget.
Name and address, sir?
Dave Darkill, five thirty, five West Broadway. I came up noticing during this meeting that you guys seem to be overcome by, you know, reading the text, which you find yourself in charge. What can, um, do you guys look at how other cities are, or some more cities? I don't know, I've never run a city before, but I own businesses, so I always got all the business. So, do you guys do that?
Judge?
Yes. They don't say you're a sheriff, I have that, so I'm a police officer. That might be a little, little man. So, if that wasn't one thing, but I was, this is a mandatory report on the bill, so I'm astonished. And I guess, your name?
Smaller. Use the mic.
Once again, yeah, I guess I'm sure, it's been said more than I believe, but I am somewhat astonished by that. You guys are sort of overwhelmed, are you seeking maybe an outside, an outdoor people? Yeah, so it's a horrible degree of capture or anything like that. The original plan of the evening was to hear feedback from the residents on this public area, so that's why. Okay, there've been a number of such simple questions that it seems that someone asked them to do, so, um, that's what I'm asking you to answer this, so that's not unusual, then, right? So, you guys know people, you reach out to some more cities. Just to give you an example, we have someone coming from Nassau, some stations, some ideas that they're doing, you know, trying to create revenue and increase costs, so that's what he's talking about.
From where?
Nassau. Nassau County, Nassau County. Yeah, maybe, I don't know, maybe some more, I said over the side, I said over the side.
My goodness, I just want your question. I think each of us goes through a number of different things as we decide how we approach a budget. I can speak for myself that we reach out to other colleagues of ours, whether they are less officials, their department has been in the city, as well as in other municipalities that are similar to ours. We do have in each municipality, not only because of our location, but some of the services that we provide that are now provided in others, in other municipalities. But there are similar municipalities from House of States we can reach out to and get counsel on how, and how we can use those councils that we collaborate with other individuals in order to understand ways of tackling challenging issues. So, and I think we bring all of that to the table, our own background. There's a councilwoman who's very involved in college, and she brings that with her, and all of us have a background in different things, and we bring that to the table in order to understand and kind of develop ways of tackling this issue. But we did decide as a council that we were gonna hear all the residents, and there was a double presentation in two weeks, and that we would have more substantial understanding of that one.
Okay, just to include it, there's a lot of things that you have on your consideration, yet it strikes me that a lot of practices have shown that you're not really clear about fundamental things that would drive your decisions. So, that's what, you could somewhat consider about that, so. Well, thank you very much.
Please, your name and address, so, right?
Come in, Cam, five eighteen, one four, let's race. First, let me say, you are a member of the city. We all get that. And possibly, maybe something should have been done a little bit more politically or less corporately, however you can sense the fear that people have. One of the words that came out, I missed the last meeting, and one word that came out was that we're being threatened, we would have our essential services, policemen, firefighters, firemen, et cetera. It really isn't the way to get the rest of us behind you and have a monopoly of this. No, I think that's really a cruel tactic to try and have people governed by the fear of losing their most essential services.
So.
Excuse me, if I can just say, here are, there's only four percent of the budget that's discretionary. So the only way to get lower than eleven percent, if that gave you a closer number, firstly, is to make some of the rest of the bond personally. That's the only way. That's where our expenses are.
From the numbers presented, it does seem there's gotta be a lot of that somewhere else. Yeah, yeah. I, I think.
Good floor.
Some of your, some of your departments, some of the people actually said they're ones that are producing some of your revenue. The sanitation, et cetera. You receive money from us for that. You know, it just seems. That I, that would not be where I'd be those long days at, because obviously, maybe your non-residents coming to you at the beach are gonna have to pay a way higher fee than they are earning. You know.
They only take the whole of the revenue, is that?
Okay.
There's a lot of rules that I would be against.
I would pay more so to the beach. I'll be perfectly honest. I think my husband and I paying sixty-five or seventy dollars for an entire summer where I'm there every day. It is really a big budget, and what I greatly appreciate. So, I don't know where maybe some monies could have been found. I question whether or not you have explored all of the monies you could have gotten as a result of Hurricane Sandy. Did you apply to New York Rising? Because I don't know if you've received money from them, but on behalf of a building within the city, I got two point two million for my residence. Do you, I heard something mentioned before, and that I'd like answered. FEMA hasn't paid everything to the city? Who's going after that? If we're not filling our paperwork to get paid from the transportation department in three years, that makes me think someone dropped the ball on figuring out my paperwork. I'll do it for you. I presented a stack like this to New York Rising.
It's, we're down to about four or five million.
But still, four or five million would pay your bond.
So we're down to four million, and if all the paperwork has been in for.
And then you wanted to be, I got from New York Rising twice a week.
We were very aggressive with New York Rising, and had an enormous amount of money, not New York Rising, but FEMA and the state, we were really aggressive, and got an enormous amount of money. I can't speak to the figure, but I guess the commission could, but you can want to continue now.
All right, well, that really was.
No, we were very aggressive. We're more aggressive than some other municipalities in terms of, comparing ourselves to municipalities like the last gentleman suggested. How much have we received? So far, we've received over a hundred and two million dollars for a project. Unfortunately, you did not use FEMA money to cover your operating expenses. But some of our operating expenses covered projects that FEMA were away to reverse. The twelve month AP month, turnaround, what it's about. There's one thing one day click, we keep talking about this, four point one million dollars, and he rose us, FEMA really owes four hundred thousand to pass him. Other portion of it is from the York State. The way it works, we get nine percent reimbursement from FEMA, and once we close out Pride, we then fight the state, and then the state pays the ten percent which FEMA's paid us. We did tweak the FEMA about the outstanding money on the four point one billion, and they have moved our request up the front of the list. So, we shouldn't really blame the FEMA for the delay on this.
But we're still over four point one million.
We're still over four point one million dollars, and we still have other projects that will be closed out, that people will still be reimbursing us for. However, we're very careful. We have over a hundred PWs that we've done for FEMA. PW, you know, project work, uh, work, uh, for various projects. Some of them we haven't closed out because we want to be sure they're done, because once we close a project out, if we find out there's still some funds that we need, we would not be able to get those funds. So, we go, the definition myself, but do it very carefully and try to make sure that we do close out a project, that we're absolutely a hundred percent sure we're not gonna be needing more money for those projects.
Okay.
It did, it did, because that's what I heard about.
Thank you very much. Ms. Egan?
All right, yes. I don't think I suggest to hop with the budget, but I do have something that is relevant to the budget, if we can just clarify whose signature is on Jack Sherman's payout payout department of the budget? If I hand you the sheet, can somebody clarify? I just wanna know whose signature is on.
I do not recognize the signature, but I do recognize the first name Michael, and I would have to assume that the position would be Michael Ross.
And he's in the parking cab?
So, underneath it says controller, payroll. So, the controller, Sharon James, you've got them on the previous line, my concern.
I'm sorry, can you hear?
Sure, the controller, he on the line for city controller, we need a Sharon James, who is the department controller. That's the only one I remember.
But surely, we should know who signed off on this before you would give them.
Oh, I, I, no, I was satisfied with it.
No, I mean you first, when I meant as a city, before you give away that kind of money, you want to know exactly whose signature it is. That's why. Other than that, the city manager, and it's either Mr. Tagg or Jack Sherman, correct? So you're, it's not the signature.
I went to the manager.
Exactly, right, so the city manager on December fifteenth is Jack Sherman. So he gets his sign off on a normal payout?
I don't see it, I know it's.
Right, so whose signature is that, that in the city manager's file?
I don't know, I, I don't recognize her name. If he asks me about police officers, I review all their reports, I don't store their signatures, but I see the ratings. Until January, I haven't seen people's signatures, and since I've been acting city manager, I haven't signed any signatures, so.
Right, first gen, or?
Second gen.
Second gen, sorry. So this is signed on the twelfth of, or fifteenth of this, of November, fifteenth of December? So we should be able to find out who's signing documents, I mean.
Oh, I'll definitely find out by tomorrow morning, but I just don't know, right, it's been. Right, the action department, the signature you recognize is Thomas Larson, the area supervisor.
Okay, all right, and so then my other question, I have a question. It's effective the first of January two thousand and seventeen. Can you just explain what that means? He resigns effective the first of January two thousand and seventeen? It's on the second installment, um. But to me, it's like, shouldn't it have been notarized, initial and notarized?
No, I've never seen those forms, notarized before, and I haven't seen those forms before. They're actually used in the separation pay or.
So, okay, so it's a type of, it just, there should be like some check and balance, and somebody should have five of these. I think I should have looked at this before, and not just for Jack, for everybody who had a separation payout.
So, Ms. Egan, I know this, it, this has happened already, but I know all five of us council members have spoken about it, and it's something that after the COVID season, we're gonna perform, how this is done in the future. It's already done, you know, for the police, you know, that's what I'm gonna set out, but for non-military employees, I think the five of us are committed to coming up with a solution on how we wanna see either drawdown to the time or separation pays payments made, and also hopefully we can budget for them, so we don't have to borrow.
You know, isn't possible that this is like an illegal payout, because Watson, like, five dollars property, and he is part of like.
All this is going to the New York State Controller for the last seven years or six years, something like that, of these payments that none of us were aware were happening to this.
But you should be aware, you've been sitting up here for, I think I've been probably six years, five years, six years, I'm not so sure. So you should be aware of all the court law, because these are happening, and it's your job to represent them, because both of them, time, time, yes, they're dollars. But you can't just, all right, Jack, here you go. Do I, we need to, who asked, or anybody else? How was your first time to see this? Do you remember, basically, the one that was brought up to pay to make it right on these payout? So you didn't, were you, I'm sorry? Right, but you didn't check why we had to borrow, you didn't look at the documentation, like, oh, he's getting like X amount, she's getting X amount, and see who signed off on a lot of them? Before you like, don't they ask, just part of the.
We've seen those lists of all the payments made prior to meeting this.
Just a list of like, say, Norwegian, Norwegian, Norwegian. You didn't like, look at this. You don't use vacation hours, all of that. You didn't do, for every single person, what you should have been doing. And I'm saying you, because you are the president.
We're in a position where we need to trust the folks on our staff. We don't look at all the commission project worksheets, one hundred and two million dollars. That's just not how it's, that's how it works. So we need to trust the people that are around us, yes.
And I'm in a position of being, having a position of being a taxpayer and a voter, of having to trust my council. And you're not showing that I can trust you.
I'm just asking, I'm a street, uh, we all, I actually want to talk about the separation payments. I have to tell you, the council, that completely baffled my...
My point.
Hello? I did not plan on speaking about the separation payouts. There's a lot of questions. I haven't done the calculations. I have no idea. Either was it been earned, it properly paid or not, and that will be figured out. I think for the sake of the city, it should have figured out immediately, not six or nine months from now. What I am baffled about is that the people sitting up here don't know whose signature's on that piece of paper. That is absolutely just blows my mind. And it's shameful. People think there's no transparency in this city. This is exactly why. You know, it'll be a proper payment or not. How did no one here have looked at it in the last two weeks and said, gee, who authorized those payments? Jack Sherman, Robert Auguste, whoever on there? They'll be proper or not? That's me. Nobody's issuing this city to sit up here and say, we haven't looked at it, and I don't know who's. It's shocking to me. It's grossly necked, Jim. Unbelievable. So let me get to the budget. I've waited because my questions were going to be boring compared to the fireworks that were going on. You may need to have Ms. Mike answer this, but I just have a few questions about the budget. The 1819 budget. I understand that it's very difficult to budget to read, not in the financial world, but I'm not a budget expert. I read it as saying the city expects, I'm not sure under the sheet, but I don't know. I, I read it as, and someone else here knows, let me know, that it shows bond revenues expected in the 1819 budget of 1.8 million, 1.5 for bond anticipation notes, and 291 for sewer steering notes, what I understand, correct? So I just want to understand, is that today, the total expected bond financing that the city expects to do as of today, based on all the information they have for 1819 fiscal year?
It's all the borrowing they expected to do for the separation pay expected in 1819. Specific to separation pay.
So, so that 1.8 is just for separation, that, in 1819?
Yes.
Is there someplace else in the budget where I'd see, and I'm trying to determine how much other borrowing the city is doing? And I couldn't find anything after looking through it several times.
Mostly other borrowing that happens in the city happens in the capital budget. The capital plan is obviously being offered the next meeting, capital plan, so that's where the possible borrow.
So just to relate it to the next item on the agenda, but then I think the next item is a form of our tax anticipation note. Is, first of all, is that for 1819 or for 1718?
It's for 1819.
And where would I find that? Or where would that, what would that be part of in this 1819 budget that I have here?
The only way I'll see it is in the rent, hand interest account, and the general fund.
So can you show me on that 1819, where did you see that, or maybe? Thanks. Um, while we're looking at that, can someone tell me, because there's some confusion. I went to the New York State comptroller's website just to find out, find about, chief for our city or understanding what the debt is. As you know, when things are not clear, people are not the same place to find it. That spreads rumors, and people don't really know what's going on. What is the total debt of the city today? I'll tell you that the New York State comptroller's website says at the end of 17, it was 116 million. Is that accurate? Is it something different? Or is there someplace on the city website where I'd be able to find out what the total debt is on the city?
Well, as far as I know, that, it's reported every year, annual financial status. So I'm pretty sure that, I guess they're reporting it when I'm doing 30 seconds.
So when will we see the current debt, what the total debt is, or where can I find it?
It's not really reported on, it's only reported in the annual financial statements.
Can you tell me what it is?
Oh, it's up my head now.
Can you promise to get back to me?
Of course.
I'll reach out to you. And is it, if the comptroller's website says at the end of 17, so that's December 31, three and a half months, so it was 116 million, does that sound accurate to you?
Yes. And just so you know, the, uh, the interest associated with the rent is on the picture, nothing. It's actually either rent or rent, it's the same type of borrowing. So it's actually the fifth line from the bottom, so maybe a thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Actually, so it's a fifth line from the bottom, maybe a thousand dollars. So the expense of borrowing $4 million, the expected interest rate is 2%.
I'm sorry, just, I'm not asking about the interest rates. I'm asking where's the normally borrowed?
Well, again, it's a short term. No, it's not, there's no expense associated with borrowing except for the interest. So you won't see 4 million dollars starting to go back.
All right, so that's something I'm talking like about, she filled it out in here?
Right.
Okay.
It's $4.8 million borrowed for short term and then paid back.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Come on up, state your name and address.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jay, I'm from Long Beach. Um, a couple of things. I, I got a million here, but I'm, I'm gonna pull my tongue, a couple of. Um, I raised that the last meeting, when you guys discussed the $2.1 million bond issue, the issue of approved time backs that are owed to many hundreds of city workers. And whether or not you guys had a handle on how much that, on how much debt we're talking about here? Does it appear in, in, in your budget? But it's out there. We all know it's out there. Obviously, we have been on the answer to $2.1 million of that cinema. How much unbonded debt is out there? How much unbonded debt do we owe to our workforce right now?
I wouldn't...
I think it's your possible calculation, because if that time is approved as we speak.
Okay, but right now, what you can't, you couldn't sit down and say, okay, X number of employees, X number of hours, X number of rates. Did you call your number?
I'm not involved in the process like that. I wish I knew, but also you have to understand something that we, you guys have discussed a lot on that show before, was that were you the father, or were you...
Well, wouldn't the good story for me, how much money was all that? You guys all stood naked, you don't even know how much money is. This could be $15 million obligations that I hand over to somebody's head, but it's not appearing in any balance sheet. And then from time to time, some workers decide on a cash issue. And you guys are running, saying we got a bond, we're gonna have to shut down city services, but they owe their pay to me. How do you want, how do you want the city with that? The other thing is your math. You guys are proud saying it's only 40 examples, and they can provide 1% of the workforce. That means there's 14 hundred employees in the city. I also heard it's like 180 CSBA, 28 USA, around 82 PDA, X, 390. But do we have another thousand and, whatever the number is, uh, members of the city workforce? No? Anybody? Basically, math, you said that 14 is 1% of the city workforce?
Okay. They composed about 1% of the city's budget. They composed about 4% of the workforce. About 1% of the extent of the workforce.
So we were just playing with the numbers a little bit?
No, they, as far as the expense of the, of the employees, it's 1% of the budget.
Okay, 1% of, oh, not 1%. So let's spend for that nonsense. The other thing is, I just briefly raised, guys, I know this is a fucking weird deal in my mind. Uh, $25,000. The guy basically says that other people recorded this guy, and it has pretty much sweetened the pot to keep him on, on, on hand. This guy missed violent answer, in a loss.
I was talking about the behavior, the behavior case, Mr. Guster, what you're doing right now is actually defamation. So I just want you to understand.
No, it's not. No, it's not. It's litigation. It's not defamation.
Okay, I want to somebody break, I seem to underestimate, so maybe I, so, you know, just be like it. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, no, excuse me. You've accused me of professional malpractice. That is defamation, Mr. Guster. I had nothing to do with the behavior case, which, no, there is a decision on this topic. OP, Justice Department's decision. So, so I imply you something. I, I'll be happy with it.
In terms of reducing expenses, look, you guys want to cut back, there were potentially illegal monies that were paid out. Well, you, you're telling me clawbacks, that's from this, this self-serving advice from last meeting. That money's untouched, but once you pay that money properly, or no, you cannot get it back. That's complete nonsense. If you guys gave me a dollar that I wasn't entitled to, I'm sure that we'd be in court fighting over that dollar. So it's just that we can't call that money back. This is your service.
I think that's not what I said, Mr. Guster. This counter, I said the last, excuse me. When I said the last meeting, was that it was exceptionally difficult to do, but the city would have to hire a counter, perhaps.
That's not what you said.
That's not what I heard. How did it make anybody hire you to study with exempt employees who technically give that money back? It's not possible to say.
In the meantime, we are on the boat for I don't know how many millions of dollars. Mr. Auguste, I mean, it's on your responsibility, your court counsel, your court, the outside counsel, you hire. You're responsible for their actions. You can try and deflect, you can threaten sue them, do whatever you want. Bottom line is, you own that. That's on you. If you guys are considering making this guy your city manager, you're crazy. Thank you.
John McAlley, Long Beach. Good evening, everybody. Shifting gears a little bit. Um, I liked our recent transplant from, uh, from New York City. We spoke out of process.
Yeah, hey, John.
Sorry, I'll, I'll readjust. So our recent transplant from New York City sort of spoke out about the process breakdown led us to this really ill-gotten meeting tonight. Um, I would posit that process breakdown has led us to where the budget is tonight, to some degree as well, um, and to the general tenor of our city. So I have three real quick, easy fixes that I think you guys could move tonight, if you have consent, if you so choose. Um, they're all really easy, transparent, good government fixes that 98% of local governments are on my own employee, that I've never really understood why the city did not. So I'll throw them at you real quick. Um, number one, so we're having a, a second public hearing on the budget next week, or in two weeks, sorry, and then voting on it immediately afterwards, correct? So, but that's the typical standard in Long Beach, hold a public hearing. All right, well, I, I would suggest that we do the same, not just for the budget, but for most things wherein possible, that we can separate the public hearing by two weeks from the actual vote on it. I think it allows, you know, the public's comments to get digested and answered, and, and serious, you know, issues that they may have raised resolve. Um, and discussion amongst the council that you guys might have. It doesn't put you on the spot to make that a tough decision or a courageous decision, as, as some have remarked, um, when there's real issues at, at what. You guys could do this, you have a consent tonight. Um, number two, uh, specific to the budget, it's my understanding that if the budget is approved, or it's not approved by the city council, that the city managers or acting city managers' budget automatically goes into effect. That's awful policy. It's an application of responsibility for the city council. Um, I would posit that we should put forward a resolution that says an austerity budget goes into effect to really hold the council to pass. All non-essential actions are... And number three, uh, transparency, and this one that, I'm just gonna be really sort of straightforward about this one, plain, um, and do it in any way as possible. Uh, I would love to see the city council have regularly scheduled open working meetings, um, in between all of the city councils. And I'll leave it there. I think you guys know where that's coming from, though. Um, and specific to the budget, the most basic and fair starting point is, you know, not one cent in non-contractual raises if you're asking residents to pay $400 a year extra for 12.3%.
You mentioned austerity budget in non-essential services. What would you consider non-essential services?
I think that's what might break it out to me, but, you know, I think Mr. acting city manager, you know, said that into whatever percent of the budget, for example, 4% or 6% is what you consider austerity. It's up to you guys to define what, you know, non-essential is. It's not really me. But, you know, that's what schools do, um, you know, it's what most of the administration schools do.
Thank you.
Buses are essential.
I'd just like to point out, I actually sent an email on People Second asking for a resolution to be created to do precisely what you just said.
What happened?
There was not consensus among the council about moving that debt.
Excuse me, that's how my regulation, I think our council gave us an opinion, they required a change to the charter. And that's happened. That was my regulation. It was an inquiry because we thought that that's what school districts did, and we were told it would be a problem. We were also told it would be too late to do it for this year because it required a change to the charter. That was my regulation. Just event, was that incorrect?
I, I pulled the email off, so that helps, as well as possible, yes.
Is there anyone else from the public that wants to speak on the budget hearing? Seeing no more hands, I close the hearing.
Okay, a second public hearing for local, all of the citizens in Long Beach regarding sewer rents. This is pretty straightforward. Uh, the sewer rents and the water rates are close to the balance in the water fund and sewer fund. We're running a little low on the sewer fund, so, uh, the only way we can capture any kind of value in the sewer is to multiply our water rate, because that's the only thing we measure. We measure the water coming out, coming out, and then we get an equal value to coming in the sewer for. So the sewer rate's going up 0.05%, which is roughly, um, $3 a month.
Is that clear water or brown?
Extra for the brown.
Anyone from the council having a question?
Hold it, we're not done.
I was just waiting to see if anyone from the council had any questions, but come on up, sir.
I'm just trying to figure this out. So there's going to be an increase, I'm sorry, throw this, I'm sending the board. Are there's going to be an increase of 5%? 0.05%?
5%?
Yeah. And, but, yeah, I'm looking at the revenues, and the revenues don't seem to go up. The, the needed water sales, no.
Would that show up in the needed water sales? Where would it show up?
The sewer, so, water is not the reason for water.
So it's tied to the water that actually goes into the sewer?
It's the sewer.
Okay, so the sewer rent, that's, it's the, uh, change from $5,580 here, $5,300 left.
Which is 1%.
1%? I just couldn't figure it out when it's tied to the water. So the water's not going up?
No.
Just the sewer tied to the water.
Yes, the only way we can do that, the only thing we measure is water, because there's sewage coming out.
Right, what is the logic? Is if you use the same amount of water, it's more expensive to treat sewage than it is to run it. And how's that going to be affected once we have?
We didn't understand that, that was more to treat sewage than water. So we have to figure out the course of treating the sewage we have, and reverse it back to how much you're using. If you use a lot of water, then you discharge a lot of water, so you pay higher rate. If I use a little water, I discharge a little water, I pay less.
And how does that, how will that be affected once we have a pay fall? Do we have any idea?
We, we, I don't think we will be collecting any more of the, the rates, the sewer rents go to the county once they take over the operation.
So they have no...
Well, I, I think that's gonna depend until we finish the IMA with the county, and how that's gonna be decided. The county has not decided yet how they would pass the rates on to Long Beach customers. Uh, it looks like what they tried, it was absorbed into the, the rates for the entire county. And obviously, treating, a plant that treats 70 million gallons is a lot more efficient, a lot more economical for a plant that chains more than 10 gallons a day.
So at that point, we could potentially be saving $6 million?
Well, you would be saving $6 million in sewer funds in City of Long Beach, but you would be paying something to the county.
Well, wouldn't that come out of our taxes, except for taxes?
I don't know how the county has, we have not finalized an IMA yet. The attorneys are working on that. And there's a lot of issues in terms of how they... The attorneys are working on that, and there's a lot of issues in terms of how they want to absorb it. They could absorb us into one sewer district out of the three that they have, or they could absorb us into the entire county. Those things are all still being negotiated with the county.
And Mr. Anderson, consent orders are also going to pay for upgrades to the plant as well?
Right, we were under consent order to make certain upgrades to the plant to reduce the amount of ammonia and the amount of nitrates that go around this channel. And as a result, we've spent in the last year, other consent order, about two and a half thirty dollars upgrading different portions of the plant to better remove nitrates and better remove ammonia, and also dechlorinate the water. If we chlorinate through the bacteria, requires us to dechlorinate, which is a must process, but for all the salt benefits around this channel.
Thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak? Seeing no hands, I close the hearing.
Would it be feasible?
It's in the charter.
Patrick Ostees, two twenty-five West Falkland, he's fifty-two years young. How's that? All right, listen, would it be feasible to our style water department, to American Water? They're a big, big company, sewer treatment, American Water. Would it be cheaper unless there were burdens to the city officials? What do you think? Do you ever take into consideration, if you're going to let me just say this to you, we do this because of this one, how much we do it for? You don't have to sell it, lease it. This way you can take it back. What do you think? Good idea? American Water, yeah, we're all off.
Well, actually, the Nassau County Sewer Plant is running under an operation maintenance agreement with SUEZ, which is a national water company. But the real goal here is to remove all the discharge from both the Bay Park plant and the Bay Shore plant in Long Beach, to remove their discharges permanently from Reynolds Channel, go through Bay Park plant, and then to pump the water, the treated water for the plants up to Cedar Creek, to Cedar Creek plant in Monto, which already has a three-mile outfall pipe out to the ocean. This would really improve the back bays, it would improve the ability of the back bays to handle storm surge. This is really a very, very positive project from an environmental standpoint of view.
I truly understand that, but you know what? They gotta need the higher quality of the EPA, okay? A safe water safety act. American Water. Will you handle Rita and Atlantic Ocean?
Ray Omer, about five sixty West Fourth Way. I just heard that this is gonna be very beneficial from an environmental point of view of discharging the treated sewage, taking it out of Reynolds Channel, but pumping it out into the ocean. This is millions of gallons per day that will be discharged through the ocean outfall pipe. We saw exactly what happened with Bay Park here, where the sheary broke down and slowly poisoned Reynolds Channel. And not once did any government official have a him set, Nassau County, Long Beach State, that we were poisoning Reynolds Channel. There's never noticed maybe we shouldn't be fishing off of that gnoli of here. But now we're gonna pump it out into the ocean, millions of gallons per day, when there is the technology to turn the sewage treatment into water for irrigation and water for drinking water. The technology's been there for fifty years. New York City uses it, Israel uses it, New Jersey uses it, Las Vegas uses it, Southern California uses it, but yet, Long Beach is gonna be a flusher on a toilet bowl out into the Atlantic Ocean. I.
Let's go reclaim water.
I'm just, I'm sorry, but I, I know it's not really part of this issue, but, but water, this is such a great environmental plan. I tell you, you're solving one problem, but you're creating another.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak, I'm hoping people have. Seeing no hands, I close the hearing.
Monto Radio Council, ladies and gentlemen, we're the Long Beach Sewer Rents. Hearing's been held on this island today. I intend to the resolution fixing it for life in two thousand eighteen, please, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, every year we open our beach park and we're all there. We get, we get dominated with the sewer lets, the primary sewer lets out. So this is supposed to be beach park schedule, and when we go part-time, then we.
Any questions to the councils? Open in the beach, any questions to the public? Open in the beach.
Enjoy your summer.
Thank you. Thanks, Amy.
I agree, the resolution delegated to the municipal controller of the city of Long Beach, Nassau County, New York, house organizations, private and adult tax evasion notes, etc., or so much there are, and they are necessary, in anticipation of legislation passes that we will implement here, commence in July third, two thousand eighteen, and to prescribe the terms, forms, and contents, and provide for the sale and credit enhancement of such notes.
Okay, so right now, we have four million dollars overused by the state. If that money comes in between now and the end of this fiscal year, there will be no borrowing. If it does, we need to authorize it tomorrow because there are certain time points that come in, into the sample period and such, so that we need the authority or actually the permissions to borrow the money if necessary. We do anticipate getting the money before the end of the fiscal year, but we can't take a chance. As I said, if we do get it, there will be no borrowing. And then if we don't get it, if we don't get the money, once we get the money in, it's also worth it here to make sure that the bond is paid. Or else I'll go back to council.
No. Right, and there is a specific compromise that was arrived at for this whereby if, if the proceeds from New York State and FEMA for this four point one million dollars come in during the life of this camp, the city will be in position to evaluate cash position at that time. And if it decides it needs to spend that money for any other purpose before does the camp do here two thousand and nineteen, that must be, that allocation must be explicitly approved by council resolution within two council meetings of receipt of FEMA and New York State.
Any questions from the council? Ms. McGinnis?
I ask law, when you're in, when a government is in, is within fiscal distress. So we'd like to ensure since that certain processes are happening. When I look at the law, it says that the chief financial officer of the municipality is supposed to prepare a quarterly report of summarized budget data depicting the overall trends of actual revenues and budget expenditures for the entire budget rather than individual line item. Chief financial officer is also to prepare a report of a quarterly trial balance of general ledger accounts. These reports are supposed to be submitted to the governing board, which in this case is the city council, and the chief executive officer of such municipality. The state director of the budget, state controller, the chair of the assembly, ways of mission, and on and on.
In what time?
Is that happening?
Only if it is four point one million dollars.
Yeah, it's, okay, I'll roll over this section on it. It's New York Consolidated Law, laws, local finance law, LFN, and then ten point ten, and the section C. For each fiscal year occurring during the time deficit bond or bond initiation notes issued in anticipation of the sale of such bonds are outstanding, up to and including the last fiscal year during which such debt or debt issued to refund debt, such debt is outstanding, the chief financial officer of this bond is supposed to produce quarterly reports and so on and so forth. And that is supposed to begin to the city council, each city council member, and a way of the state controller. Is that happening?
Is that solely for a bond or for?
Well, that's a bond or a bond initiation.
That's about deficit bonds. Your question does not have, it does not follow this obligation.
Right.
That's the first question. The second answer is yes, it's quarterly reports, it's that annually, quarterly to New York State, and then they're available to the city.
So this.
It's a requirement of payment of deficit financing, so for the ten years that the bond to pay that, you're required to be quarterly reporting to New York State and other counties. That's all the one that was actually asked.
What, it has nothing to do with this?
But it's not right, the tender's not effective. Oh, that's not the one.
And that's submitted to the city council member?
It's made available to the other counties.
Great. My next question talks about fiscal year and the budget. It says thirty days after the adoption of the budget for the next succeeding fiscal year, the city is to prepare a three-year financial plan covering the next succeeding fiscal year and the two fiscal years thereafter. And this is also from a recent audit report from the office of the state of controller for the city of Old East, where it highly recommends that municipal financial plans for multi-year purposes are given to the city council members and the state so that you have an idea to project future shortfall from revenue. So I would hope that is happening as well.
Yep, absolutely. We didn't even have the financial matters, multiple ones, in respect to this item in particular.
So that's submitted, that information is submitted to the city council members?
I'm not sure, this is a verbal conversation we've had with the financial planners over the last several weeks.
It says the financial plan is to contain projected employment levels, projected annual expenditures, rich benefits, debt service, appropriate reserve amounts, copies of the plan shall be provided to the chief executive, state director of the budget, the state controller, chair of the assembly, and all governing bodies.
I mean, admittedly, this is not my, my, to be honest with you, but my understanding, especially from that current response and the side power, is that the information is being available to the council.
I'm sorry, the report you're recently done is not on Long Beach report, it's in the city of Old East.
No, that was basically information mentioned in the recent audit. I went to the law again for two, which is law ten point ten, and the information is being available.
Right, but the ones you were just talking about wasn't related to that law, it's related to the city of Old East.
Incorrect.
I believe you already answered that. The information is sent for you to New York State. It's requested to be given to the regional office, which they then disseminated, I think, it's not requested to be given to the regional council.
It's not?
Yeah, the regional office request that we send it to them, and then they disseminate.
And all the information is available to the city council members for the next succeeding year?
It's available.
So they can go up two years ago and see the three-year financial plan?
As far as the three-year financial plan, I don't know that that was required from August.
Per local law, ten point ten, it's required that you're supposed to have a financial plan and supposed to be submitted to the city council.
I think the official statements of the year of the city, at least once or twice a year, is a three-year cash flow. So that was that, that's a part.
Okay, so that's in that phase of the level of the city. My next question is, do we have a fund policy?
A fund balance policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mentioned that earlier. It's seven five percent, which is actually the minimum for a general fund, recommended since, right now, the city has this.
Thank you.
I've been working on Long Beach since nineteen forty-nine. Somebody said that would be a period of years. I used to say toast. I think I'm a rich American, active, I do personally, people talk to me. You need to have to reduce expenses or spread them out. How do you reduce expenses? I know we as a union, as a, especially if there's no raise, especially if you're giving back for days, whatever. Listen, guys, we don't make up a good thousand dollars a year, okay? We're in the two eight fifth dollar, an hour rate. Yes, that's tough, okay? And nobody wants to be in that position because somebody did budget something, I do. All right, just having said that, if you keep asking the union for more impacts and more impacts, eventually they're getting smaller than what you're saying, it's just giving it to them. Paying out terms of revenue, the council needs to pick out a box. Personally, I can't come up with a concept where, hey, I'll generate a few million dollars tomorrow. One person's safety, maybe you could spend forty, fifty thousand dollars on flowers. No, this isn't Santa Monica or Mission Park, I mean, don't make a mistake. You don't need it. Company cars, how many white issue base are parked outside? Do we need them? People just use their own personal cars, don't make very big insurance, gas, something. I don't know if this is possible, that you've got this big block, you do the headquarters and photo. Can we use that for? Ten dollars a day, a car, Saturday at Sunday, or do someone, it's only a thousand dollars. Just a concept, just trying to think of them. You know, it's kind of mini, pretty, little behind type of thing, we have to, they turn it to floors and floors. One of the things that the general standpoint wastewater, which is where I operate over there, one of the things that every wastewater, of course, the entire United States, represents a huge system, okay? It costs you guys money, it costs money, and you're really going to eliminate them. It's also a privilege for you, if you think about it. I was mentioning, my commissioner, there's a place up in New York, San Pablo. What they do is they came up with a floor, they go to every business in town that they teach you. And they took note of the fires, whatever risks that they had and so forth, and made a list, okay? And then every six months or so, they would go over it and make sure what these businesses were using, what is available to them, and then use it for the system. If they didn't do it, it's a fight. I'm dead, I guess.
I urge you, I agree, thank you, appreciate it.
I just always say a little retribution that you have.
That's nice, thank you.
One by six seventy-two, Boyd. I'm trying to figure out this bond, and one thing to do, if you don't know that you're going to need the money, you expect the money to be coming in, it's not part of the budget because it's just borrowing, does it have to be done now?
Yes.
It does have to be done.
There's a revenue anticipation note that matures at the end, which you can do, but we can't renew that, and that's why it has to be done.
But why can't we take it out of our reserves? Instead of borrowing money, you have to have that. Well, right now, by my calculations, we've taken about eight million out of reserves, so we suggested we only had four, so. Well, how did you take eight million out? That's a question. One point six that someone suggested we take out of reserves. You suggested one million out of reserves, and then another, I think, million. How much do you think?
I can't go with the one million out. Eight million reserves, like seven hundred, seven nine thousand?
I also want to point out that reserves is not necessarily cash. So some of the reserves are not receivables from FEMA, at least. The fund balance is not necessarily people cash. It's a reserve of unused, unused revenue in part a year, but you're still waiting on some of that money to come in. So some of that reserves is tied up in.
Well, well. Does it represent cash? A fund balance is not a real fund balance, I really don't.
It is a balance, it's not cash.
Well, nothing's cash. I don't expect you guys to be walking around with hundred-dollar bills. I don't think that's happening, okay? Is it a fund balance? Do you have that money?
We have fund balance, again, it's any money.
So you have almost eight million dollars in fund balance?
No, we have about four.
Well, you said you were in the budget, you had eight. So what's the truth now? Because in your proposed budget, you were going to take seven million, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars to make that eighty-nine million dollar budget. And you guys nicely looked through the budget, through the original budget, the requested amount, and you saw that you could make seven million dollars worth of cuts, which you did make, which was great, okay? So you didn't have to take that money. But if you didn't take that money, now we're finding out it's not here, have you put it in the budget that it was you? Really, it's right here in your budget.
Yes, he's got, so in the proposed budget, the last two columns to go to the two hundred requested. So it's basically every dollar that was requested.
Yes.
And then we also have the proposed, what we're actually putting in for.
Right.
So that seven point eight nine dollars you're talking about is the amount of debt that between the requested amount, the revenue we had versus what we requested, we bet you.
And the way it does appear in was from the fund balance. Look at the budget. How you were going to make that up was from the fund balance. Now, how could you propose that in the fund balance if you didn't have it?
We didn't know that. It's just a fact, it's just after what the department requested. We're not willing to do that.
Who was requesting the fund balance a year ago?
All of the department requests exceeded what revenue was available.
So who put that number there? The department, didn't it?
It's a function of all their requests, yes.
Right, and why didn't put the number there? So somebody put the number there. Now, last year's budget, you said you had nine million dollars. I have last year's budget, if you want to look at it. You said you had nine million dollars.
Last year's budget, which you had three funds, yeah.
And you said you were spending eight hundred thousand plus, I think, a hundred fifty-nine thousand, something like that. One million from nine hundred, from nine million equals eight million. What happened to the money?
Well, you talked about the nine point four million that we talked about in the last question. How that seven million...
The money you talked about, that you said in the last budget you had.
Talked about, said, you mean the same thing. So that nine point four million was all three funds. Seven million of those general funds. Between the deficit debt, what is happening between the bond not being authorized and the appropriation of fund balance, we need that general fund fund balance be about four million dollars.
So the other way, you've already taken into account the two point one million dollar bond. That's what you're saying, the bond that wasn't authorized, you've already taken that out of the debt, out of the bond. So why do the lights, the CSCA here complain that they're not getting paid? You're taking the money out of it. What am I missing?
You're missing the fact that fund balance doesn't equal cash. You need cash to pay people, fund balance doesn't pay people.
Fund balance can't also be real money.
Some of it is either receivable. It's just like any other balance sheet, some of it is receivable, assets.
I could pledge it to years, much bigger than this, with a small one, okay? We never had fund balance that wasn't fund balance. Now, you also have a risk retention fund, and you also have a contingency fund. Now, you tell me today that the contingency fund, the year, bonding here, of one point, what is it? One point seven million, is it really one point seven million? The risk retention fund, you're asking for three million this year? What's in the risk retention fund if you're asking for three million this year? What's in it already that you're padding three million off?
Not padding, that is a common expense. The risk retention fund bears the expense of workers' compensation to offset payments to our retired firefighters in our municipality and other small jobs complaints that are paid by the city by cash.
So you're citing all the risk retention fund charges, right? Well, look, you get answers.
You've come to the wrong place.
Anybody else on the panel of the division?
Yeah, I need to get Jay Ossoff. Um, just a couple of ideas on this. Uh, I mean, it's to be, so you guys exploded about a bond resolution and... Okay, and in the interim, you floated a two point one million dollar bond resolution, floating down by, well, a big dawn before voting in the past, correct? Here we go, it doesn't hurt to ask. So now, this, this particular resolution also requires a four-vote majority, yes?
No, no.
Three. Oh, a tan?
No, it's a three, only five.
Okay, so this, this can be done by a single majority?
Correct.
All right, and there's something in the language, but I know you said that it has to be done now because it basically has to be done before the end of the fiscal year or something to that effect?
No, that wasn't what I was starting to say.
Okay, but I'm just wondering, I think you said something, it can't be renewed, but there's language...
Well, the rand, you're talking about the rand that's actually due at the end of June, that's correct. The rand, the rest, revenue anticipation note cannot be renewed again.
Okay, so, but that's not what this is. This, this is a tan.
Right.
Okay, this is, this is basically looking for advance on money that's coming sometime after July first, well, technically?
Technically, no, it's, it's an advance on tax revenue.
Okay, so there's also language I'd like to hear about it. When we get the money, will we have this, we have to pay it back? Or we come back to council to authorize some other idea?
You either get it paid back right away, or two council meetings will last from the time that New York State can be able to provide those funds, and it has to come back to the council for any alternate allocation.
Okay, so that's very confusing, I mean, I get that. But how are we talking about a tax anticipation note? If we're talking about money, we're talking about plugging a gap between now and the receipt of money from New York State and FEMA. That FEMA and New York State money is not tax money, correct? It's reimbursement for expenses.
But for purposes like this, for deficits, they cannot, I know for some reason it is better than I can. But it is being used for its proper purpose, and we've been advised by my counsel on such as well.
Well, the big, the big issue here is that we will not have our taxes come in in time to pay us. The rands, by law, can only be renewed three times. The sand recovery, we're in our seventh year. So we, so rands can't be renewed because they're distributed through the statute. In fact, our control, I'm with side power, had the foresight to suggest that we contact the state. They asked them to alter state law to make the land high, which is much more realistic when you're talking about recovering money from sand. So we don't get that money, we have to pay back. The only funds we can guarantee to come in are tax anticipation notes from our July taxes. We are confident that between now and the July taxes, we will get the money in, and then we'll replenish the general fund.
Okay, I understand. But can, can we agree that this type of expenditure would more appropriately be covered by a rand than a tan?
Yes, but legally prohibited.
But our rand credit card is maxed out. Yes, okay.
Yes.
Anybody else? No hands for the rand? Nope, save no hands, next item.
I implore the resolution authorized the city manager to future contract the residential 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 for the Olean Resment.
Yes, with the continued restoration of the superstorm Sandy, we have no bathroom facilities on New York or Neptune Boulevard, and... Where's the thermostat, John? Virginia. So this is, to meet all of the requirements of having, the park health requirements of having residential facilities on the beach, meeting all the ADA compliance requirements, and it should be one hundred sixty-two thousand dollars.
Any questions from the council?
Just one, the city hopes to get reimbursement from FEMA. Have we got reimbursement previous years for the trailers?
Yes, today we've reimbursed the three years after last year. It's a whole process, once we order the bathrooms, put the bathrooms in, we submit, and this is one of those project work sheets that we do not close. We put it forward, the process were cool, but they lack a year in line to prove it enough. So we're over the last year. We've already submitted for the bathrooms for this year. We'll probably get last year's, like, this year, and next year. And hopefully this will be the last year we have to rent bathrooms because with the long course sand replenishment into the bathroom Minnesota, we'll have to be permanent bathrooms in front of high class stations, so we cannot rent these anymore.
So you said last year's were approved, we're just waiting on it?
Last year's were approved, we may not have received the money, and we might this year. And, you know, I just mean, down the table received it, but it's happened every year for the past four years, so.
Any other questions? Save no, next item.
I implore the resolution authorized publication of hearing of the local law that in so far as to relate to, related to a charter pursuant to Long Beach, regarding the local laws, we're going to tax funding, looking to establish a general municipal law, section three C. The science publication only is here to be held in eighteen seventy-three. We'll move to the voting. And what is the local law making the joint of the city of Long Beach Drive, similar?
I will.
All right, that's for the vendor.
Yes.
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 I implore the resolution fixing and providing for two thousand eighteen season of the Olean Resment.
I will.
I will.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
I implore the resolution designated to the city controller and city of Long Beach as a candidate, New York, powers to authorize the use of three million dollar tax anticipation dollars of said city or so much thereof as may be necessary in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for fiscal year commence in July of two thousand eighteen, and to preserve returns for in the on that and provide for the sale and trade in of such bonds.
I will.
Um, I just want to, well, I want to do credit correctly to my fellow council members. It was language that they agreed to add to the resolution to express some concerns I had about the money. And it did commit possibly being used for alternatives, and they agreed with the language here that that happens back to council. So with that, I vote yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I implore the resolution authorized the city manager to future contract the residential residential for the Olean Resment. I implore the resolution authorized the city manager to future contract the residential residential for the Olean Resment.
I will.
I will. Oh, yes, and we do it in now, we don't get to bring it in now. Yes.
Before I vote, I just want to say that I'm completely, that we can move forward, but based on my concerns from last year, I'm still asking that we come together and form a committee so that we can have community input with respect to any ADA situation or anything that we can refer to those who might be disadvantaged physically challenged or even mentally challenged. With that, I vote yes.
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 I implore the resolution authorized publication of hearing of the local law that in so far as to relate to, related to a charter pursuant to Long Beach regarding the local law, overriding the tax, ready to make, establishing general municipal law, section three C.
I will.
Yes. Yes.
City managers won't be personally voting for about a city board, they're making motion close to me.
I will.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right, we're going to start our group of prayer section in five minutes.
I want to tell Dave. Dave, take me out of my seat.
Thank you, everyone, put a category, finally had something to shuffle people. I guess a lot of you guys, mind cream?
I usually put like the guys that make the donuts. I think we discussed dinner, Uber recipes. I just don't know if you can just... Freebies? Oh, I'm kind of like freebies. Does anybody have anything to do with that? Yeah, yeah.
What now?
Yeah. Right, but it's, but this fund balance is right here. Yeah, it's, but they said it's here. So, yeah, so it's...
Okay, I know, group of prayer, three minutes of our own time.
So this is part of the...
Of course, they don't work tonight. We use the topic line, which is very helpful to keep our group of prayer section coherent. Um, it's gonna be respectful of the figures, and with that, we have a campaign here. Please state your name again.
Um, I was talking to the federal minister that we got for the Olean managers position. Um, I noticed we were all, again, shooting thousands of them. And, um, I feel that by making it a part-time position, you really put us a brim. You know, just myself, use my imagination. Um, we have, I don't know, you know, a culture of land only accessible by three bridges and open access to the water. Now, it's only planned on eleven, anyone who's planning that, I guarantee it's back on the city. It's very, I guess, by itself. So, um, I guess I have two questions. First of all, I want to say I have a conference in Scott County, for support. This is nothing to do with that. But I do feel that it should be a, um, position. And I wanted to know, um, let me do my question. Was that three hundred thousand gave as base for the budget? And will we be able to get transparency on how much of the three hundred thousand was spent building the municipal office in this building? And how much is going for salaries? I also should be increased, I feel this is what happens. Like, it's like money's going to the...
So my understanding, and council members, we have, we have the OEM here. Um, we were offered three hundred thousand dollars rand money to pay for the OEM, to fund the OEM for two years, and then we went to, you know, hire OEMs to manage that same unit, so we hired them. So there was a decision made to try and take some money and use that, use the charge to build the center, which we needed more money, and somewhere before I made a different money. Um, you, so we used like seventeen thousand, I think, for each of the two co-leaders of the OEM. The whole OEM, they really never used it, right? So, um, I think we anticipate in future storms and needing it and using it. Um, but I think on a full-time basis, we don't necessarily need to pay a salary of that caliber, especially with the budget crisis we're facing.
I understand that trying to move on this day, but I don't think, I just think we've gone from places in that we survived Sandy and we're getting over it, but OEM doesn't just handle terrorism. It's a hundred storm, and you're a terrorist. And just by twenty-nine and latest today, we can see what one bridge going out does. You have an island, you have three bridges, you have no hospitals, and you have two points of pantry for terrorists. So, um, you're saying we're going to take it, so only set up two thousand?
I think it was about seventeen, that's right, I think it's a little stadium to do that actual work.
So where is there supposed to be hundred thousand?
Into the building and facility, which is going to be on this lot.
See, I picture something like the control panel, sergeant, and nobody there. I would rather see a full-time manager than...
I don't think it's of use, like, if there's no emergency, my understanding, I mean, I'm not an emergency skill, but my understanding is that if there's no emergency happening, it's not of use.
But you're spending, how much are you spending on the wall?
It's all rand money, it's a million and change.
So I'm asking for transparency on the three hundred of that.
It's not his wheelhouse, but I think he's well versed on intuition there. And of course, the OEM will be about one point six billion. Just a little comment on the reimbursement, adding the three hundred thousand, one hundred fifty, bond forces destruction of the OEM. And we'll recruit more this year than seventeen thousand and twenty thousand dollars. They should pay, we'll recruit one hundred fifty thousand dollars of their pay, so for cover one, and you expect... Okay, I appreciate you, Hamid, thank you. Uh, my thoughts, Laurie.
My only comment would serve as that between the civil service employees working today, their voice, they were led to, I believe they were misunderstood as far as 2,100,000. And I hope that somewhere a little likelihood down and a bunch of adoption, that some of the air could be cleared out. And I don't know how you're going to do that, but just many defenses or just building bridges. We're all in this together, and that's all I would like to say. And thank you for your time, Jennifer.
Thank you. Ms. Alyssa.
I'll pass on this behalf if I could.
I think with the sessions today, for any questions, Sam is of the entire 2019 budget. I implore you to closely review the revenue assumptions as they are asking what should really be an even higher tax increase. The areas that I suggest you look at are departmental income, licenses and permits, and financing sales and property. You guys really have to make tough choices. There's no easy answers. I said it two weeks ago. It's whether or not you're really going to do it. And you owe it to yourselves and your future careers to do it. I also want to suggest that with 12.3 tax increase, you mentioned that how much dollars that is, but also mentioned how much you'd save in this current, in this budget versus last year's budget. Like, how much have you saved from each union? How much have you saved in overtime? How much have you saved in supplies? And maybe that would help the crowd be less, you know, irate about, about this budget process. And I think this really reflects an educational process that we've all been going through the past few years, and that each one of us is responsible to work together when we like each other or not, and to be objective, and to really fix the city. So I really hope that you guys do.
Thank you, John. Sorry, I got, you had three. Apartment, places, and just buying and selling property.
Buying and selling property. When I compare those to 2017, they just don't look right for the 2019 budget. They're too high. So I really think you need a higher tax increase.
Thank you. Ms. Ashen.
Thank you, John. I changed the ready speech. Just a couple of questions. One, I want to circle back to what I started on before but hadn't intended to, and that was the city manager payments. And this is really just a process question. The only superior to the city manager is the city council, right? There's no other superior within the city government structure. Is that correct?
Right.
So I assume that the city manager didn't sign the overtime sheet because he reckoned that someone else had to do it. And the city council, I understand, had no idea that that payment was being paid.
That is correct.
That is correct, yeah. I mean, I know in general, when people leave the payroll and you get separation, right? Like, just in a general way.
But you're the only city manager. You are the only superior. Everyone else that works for the city is a subordinate of the city manager. And you're telling me that you're not aware of the payment. Is anyone on the dais, was anyone on the dais aware at the time that it was paid, that it was being paid in amounts? And did the council appoint someone else to act as city manager for the purpose of signing off on that?
No.
The city charter does have provisions regarding when someone else is either appointed by the existing city manager or the council, and that was not done in this purpose specifically?
There was, there was an acting city manager designated at the time, which is perpetuated by a service of a letter on the clerk of the existing city manager. So city manager has a letter with the clerk designating an acting city manager. At the time, the acting city manager was Commissioner Dack.
Commissioner Dack said he was not the one who signed that.
That's correct.
And you've seen no other letter designating anyone else to act as city manager?
No, he was designated to act as city manager.
And he did not sign it?
Okay.
Next question is, that was 2.1 million in the separation payments that were made. Were there other separation payments made during 1718 fiscal year?
I think that's my understanding of all of the times.
President Ramon, and I may have misunderstood you, but I think when Ms. Heaving was up here in response to a number, she was having a number of questions. I think you said that the 2.1 million dollar bond will be put back before the council again?
No.
Did I misunderstand that?
Yes. I think we're still borrowing for it.
You're borrowing money, but you're not, you're not borrowing for those payments because the payment's already made. You'd be borrowing to double the budget.
Yes.
So that 2.1 million dollar budget you said is to pay, fund separation payments will never be brought back, that specific bond, for that purpose?
Correct.
Could it be brought back today?
I think it's too late.
Why is it too late?
My understanding is it's too late for the way the bond, because we needed it for the last one of the fiscal year, is my understanding.
So it can't be brought back as a matter of time to get the money for the end of the year? It can't be brought back because it was seeking to basically pay for separation payments that were already paid?
I think it's not a possibility. If I understood our bond council.
Is that the reason it's not being brought back?
The longer it's.
Could it not be brought back because the separation payments had already been made?
Between bond council and city council, I can't answer that question.
So bond, bond council is, you know, attorneys that.
That's broke.
They write the resolution for the bonds. We get it outside, both our, I have various things, and this one is our bond council.
And they wrote the resolution.
They wrote the resolution that was presented to the city council. And they brought the word, the agenda item, it said it was for separation payments?
You said the agenda item?
It's the agenda, the city council agenda item. It's a description of the bond and a legislative memo.
No, that was probably by my assistant. And then the legislative memo was just not actual legislation, it was just a script.
So the legislative memo said it was to fund separation payments?
That's just, that's what it's typically called, although it did almost every year, certainly every year I've been here, it also goes on drawing this on a.
Is it proper, if you had got, if that bond had not been voted down that night or not passed, would it have been completely proper the way it was presented to borrow that money?
That's the question. I can't answer. I'm not, I'm not, from my standpoint, privilege, I can't discuss it, but it sounds like privilege would be way to go to the council.
Can council answer that?
No, attorney.
He said privilege is way, you were declined.
I'm not in a position to answer that. I'm not bond council. I can't speak for it.
Corporation council basically just said that decline is way of the privilege. Does anyone on the dais understand whether or not, their understanding and advice of council, this bond could have been drawn down based on the way it was presented to the council?
I need to ask the question in terms of our current councils. Bond council instructed us and specifically said that this is confidential information. So are you now saying that we're free to share information here on the, on the dais?
What I'm saying is that information has been shared already.
I'm confused.
Well, that's a complex question about whether you should, I believe there's a chance that they have a way to first, with council, to vet those remarks about bond council. But I'm not in a position to answer that question.
But, but your office prepared the legislative memo which said it was to fund separation payments, which was not fabricated. Is that correct?
A legislative memo is not legislation.
I'm asking you whether, you said, clarifying that your office prepared the legislative memo to the city and to the council that said it's to fund separation payments?
That's what I asked you to do for you. Thank you for your questions.
Now, Mr. Phil Schlitz.
Hi, Nori. My husband thought that I'd be left. So my question is, again, about the city manager's position where O E M is interviewed, and when will we know? Because we need to know sooner rather than later. And Mr. Dr. Stacy, have you applied for this position? And if so, would you retract your application?
And if I did, as the city attorney, I wouldn't be in a position to discuss it with the council. And so is David.
I'm sorry.
Question B, and Mr. The Council as well.
Okay, well, I would suggest that if Mr. Dr. Stacy did apply for the position of city manager, that the city council members, all five of you, would reject that application. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Trustman?
Can you answer? Liz Preston, Long Beach. I'd like to take this moment to thank the social media platforms and the Long Beach Herald that engage residents in providing real information and sources. Sources, really, they put this in the budget, no? Oh, Valerie Kane. Okay. Okay, that's your time. Good evening. I'd like to take this moment to thank the social media platforms and the Long Beach Herald that engage residents in providing real information and sources to read a disturbing study that affected the most vulnerable of our city. Once again, the city's abilities provide correct and timely information to prevent us from remaining murky. So thanks Project 1156 Fund, Citizens to Save Long Beach, Long Beach Matters, and Long Island Street, among the few. Thank you, Honorable Miss Moore and Honorable Bento for standing up and actually reading the proposed budgets and our city charter, and perhaps saving us from yet another potential proceeding that could cost us more money we obviously do not have and never had to begin with. As residents, only few questioned the past budgets presented in fancy PowerPoint slides from years past. We were fooled. If some of the reports were made public and easy to find, we may have noticed we have not had money for years. Yet raises and new positions were and may be still being given to the select. Any management position does not get a raise in fiscal crisis. That you continue to vote with need to give these junked-in salary exempt positions is mind-boggling to the residents and leaves us once again dealing with infantile behavior that only disturbs the city, its workforce, and its taxpayers. Speaking of which, why, Mr. Ramon, have you blocked community members from your Facebook page? You are using it in your city council position, thus engaging in viewpoint discrimination, which violates the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. After last week's fashion of two of our council leaders, I respectfully request that you step down as city council president, as your behaviors do not reflect those of a leader, a problem solver, or a team player. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just want to backtrack to the budget stuff. You were asking for suggestions, so I jotted down a few. Work with smart residents. There are some really great suggestions here. I hope you take the time to reach out to some of those residents. And working with smart residents, I think I'm smart, and I've told you on multiple occasions about grants. The state just went through, and there's now 15 million dollars given in a series of grants that I was working on. And I told you, maybe you didn't, but the other municipalities I worked with were actually able to receive some of that money, so it paid for them, it paid for us. Bright side's the price of parking, the guy with meters, that's, that's part of it. Let's look at our municipal lots that we're getting, boy, let's look at all this free storage space for private vehicles that we're just giving away. Speed cameras, putting them, putting speed cameras in a manner where we can get the revenue. I know that there is a difference between Nassau County and where our tickets and ticket revenue goes due between Nassau and here. I'd really love to see speed cameras. I'd really like to see school cameras in the back. But anyways, remove all city vehicles. There are a lot of city issued vehicles. We're what, like three square miles? Why are we giving, really, it's, it's so pointless. Give a bike. And then, and like, it sounds funny, but it's, why are we giving city vehicles to any employee who is insane and like escalate? And then another suggestion is send in the paperwork to get reimbursements for that Nassau County bus, for the municipal bus from Nassau County. That money has been sitting there for years. And you know who hasn't been doing the paperwork? Do I need to say who this is again? So those are my suggestions. U P had to leave, so you can cross his name off if you get to it.
Does he put buses also?
Yeah, yeah. So you can cross that off. That is, that is those statements for everyone around U P.
Thank you.
And he's from the Long Island West side of the city. He came here with, that is what he was going to read. And one of the suggestions on there about working with NICE, the N33, sort of is in the West End, to talk to Denise Ford about that. She's actually going to be reaching out to NICE. So that's a really great suggestion. You might want to circle back to Denise on that. And now I'm going to put my Long Island Street hat on. And now I'm gonna put my Long Island Streets hat on. It takes an exceptionally cruel person to cut public transportation for our most vulnerable road users, vulnerable population, sorry, I'm extremely tired. Those, the bus cuts, three days' notice, and no public meeting. Why didn't we have a public meeting? I do not want to hear one person blame Tagney. It is your job to make sure there's a public meeting on that. And thank you, Scott Mantel, I do need to recognize that you were able to get the signs in Spanish. You spent several phone calls with me on that, and thank you so much.
I love you, council, I really love you, believe me.
You were the person who, we were talking to so many times, I have to say thank you, and thank you, everyone, and that, thank you for finally emailing me, Ramon, show me your email account works. So we need those calls back.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Blanchard. Ms. Eileen Hesch?
I would tell, yes, but a few people mentioned this, and I just want to get an answer. As I looked around the room tonight, there were a lot of people on the separation list who've never separated. I know Mr. Draxi's easy to bet he's gonna separate, and that's why he got it. But somebody had mentioned earlier tonight that it would bring a lot more trust into you if you told us immediately how these numbers were figured out. Somebody here must have these numbers, and I just think we need to see them now, not through the state auditor, but now. The other thing is that somebody just came up and said, is there anybody above the city council? And I'm confused, because I think the city charter was never changed, and that the city manager is above the city council, that you answer to him rather than him answering to you. Is that correct? Is the answer, if the answer is no, you don't have to explain it.
Actually, co-equal branches of government, that's the answer.
Co-equal?
Yes.
So he was able to make the bus decision? Right. Okay, so who's your candidate, he was able to make the decision on the buses by himself? Would that go to you?
He will. I see you and Mrs. Hales. Chris Bolzavich, still here?
No.
Is Samantha, are you still here?
Yes.
Jim Kirkland? Say your name and address.
Jim Kirkland, Long Beach, New York. I happen to be working with him, and I saw that Jack's, uh, year, year on his contract, he's paid $178,000 for the year. And I know, I think I saw an amount of over $3,000 being budgeted for the city manager in the time when we're kind of scraping for cash. That seems a bit excessive.
It sounds like it's all, it sounds like it's all, it's not the city manager.
I don't know, it's the city manager.
Yeah, I believe that's the office.
Okay, also, because that means he made about $100,000 more than for Cilanzio, but he has a bigger job, he works for the city maybe?
It's not, it's not that.
No, okay. And, well, that was basically all I, you know, I noticed that one. And the same thing with police division also, is that going to be his office too? Brad, you made a statement for it?
I believe he's being paid out of free supply right now. Am I correct? I'm pretty sure he is, yeah.
He is.
Is that salary or advance?
I know, I feel like he's on salary now.
No, he's not.
Thank you.
Oh, one other question. There's something that, something else that I've heard, and I keep saying that this isn't really what it is, but just to be sure. When Edwards was fired, he was mayor, and they decided hanging mayor wasn't such a good thing, you know, they don't mess with them. And so they created the position of city manager. And I believe that in the charter, all they did was cross out mayor and write in city manager, and didn't do anything else?
Wasn't around, I think, in the 40s.
Yeah, he wasn't, yeah, he wasn't fired.
He was fired.
He was fired, he was literally fired. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But I can tell you under the choice, I can tell you that under the choice, the city manager has all the powers of a mayor under New York State law.
Right, yeah, so in actuality, he has more power over you than you have over him.
Certainly over me.
Well, yeah, he had all the power, all the city council benefits back then, so it was standardizing that he would still have that kind of power now.
They're set up, there's that much to be co-equal branches of government.
Okay. Then everybody's under the assumption that the council hires the city manager?
They do, they do. That's, that's the only difference. It's not an independently elected position, it's an appointed position. However, the way the charter is set up, it's designed so that there's checks of balance between the city manager and the city council.
Okay, so you know he's appointed, it's like, having to his government in a way?
That's the way most governments are established, in discussion.
Thank you. Mrs. Sarah. Mrs. Margetti? Sarah, is there Sarah here? No? Brittany Littlejohn? Mr. Jay Gussel?
Good evening, again, Jay Gussel, Long Beach. I'm just trying to piece together some bits of information I heard from the quote in the evening. I heard Mr. Bendo say, and correct me if I'm not correct in character, that our bond council basically said, we couldn't have done that bond even if you guys had passed the regulation? Is that, is that my understanding of what Mr. Bendo said? And I believe Mr. Draxi confirmed that?
No, I'm not confirming any character issues, I'm just saying, I'm not in a position to discuss it.
Okay, so could we have bonded? If you guys had passed that regulation, could we have bonded it?
I believe so.
Anybody? Nobody? It just seems to me like if we could have bonded, if Mr. Moon just hacked on Mr. Bendo and Miss Moore about them blocking the city manager, which we could not illegally incur anyway, was kind of pointless. Now, I know you guys have been debating about the budget for the last couple of weeks, or you're doing this, did occur anybody that informed the leader of the city's biggest union that you couldn't have borrowed the money anyway? There's no need to have to blame these city council members over something you guys couldn't have done anyway? That, did, that didn't occur to anybody?
Without going into details, because my recollection might be different of what Mr. Bendo's was, I don't know if that is an accurate recitation of what we were advised by bond councils. We're also advised by bond council that it's privileged and we were not to discuss. So I listen to the council, so I can't characterize any other way that it's been put forward, but that's not my recollection of what was put out there.
All right, well, we could debate why, we can debate why it would be privileged, I, you're the client. To me, you should have, you should be free to disclose, I'm sorry?
Only I can weigh in on the privilege. Each person has their own individual privilege. They choose on their own. I was advised by council not to, I agree with council's argument.
Advised by council, but not told, if you do this, there would be some kind of consequence, correct? No difference. All right, well, I'm gonna scroll my order a little bit too, just because what I just heard, Mr. Draxi, who I believe is on the precipice of becoming our next city manager, saying something that the city manager is co-equal with the council. I look at the organizational chart, this very budget proposal, and clearly, the city council is above the city manager, not side by side. In addition, the city manager serves at the pleasure of the council. So that's partly an equal relationship. If they don't like the job you're doing, you should be able to fire it.
But that's what's called a check and balance, Mr. Gussel.
Yeah, right. So that's not a co-equal, so you're on the check and balance.
That's what is standard check and balance.
Well, I'd also remind you guys that the city manager has an illusion of council, not being able to call and create the illusion of residency. City map hackers in town, and I don't think Mr. Draxi has any interest in operating this family down, because number one is probably you have to order taxes here. The other thing is, Mr. McGinnis mentioned something about the audit results you guys said they're not in. The current budget shows actuals for the last budget year. So if we don't have these audited budgets, where do we get actuals from? We also have due dates, as of, I don't know, 31st of last month. Where do we get those? I mean, surely you guys can tell from expenses and revenue, temporarily, if they occur. So without the audit, how do we arrive at these projections? I mean, how do we go forward, make a new budget? We still don't know where we stand with the, with the old budget. If you don't have the audit results, you're guessing.
Mr. Gussel, that was my whole point when I made the statement, that everything is in question now. That's why I started asking questions. Everything is in question, last year's budget, the budget before that, in terms of my experience, everything is in question now, and continues to be in question, with respect to the other things that you raised about the co-equal existence of the city manager and the city council. In my experience in the past two years, this is the culture. The culture allows for a co-equal system. However, that's not my interpretation of the city charter.
Nor is mine, I've been to several ones though.
Thank you.
Chris Jones? Mr. RC's gone. Lucy Santana? And David, Garfamelli? David? Barbara Horn? And Mr. Greg Kowalski?
Thank you for hearing us out while you're past.
Thank you. That's it? Thank you for coming. We'll be back here in two weeks.
Sorry, John, I tried to get it, it just wasn't forthcoming.
No, I, he admitted it when I was there, I just wanted to say, since that's the key. This whole privilege thing is bullshit too. You need to exercise privilege.